Sue, Marburg. Mary?
Mary Kuchewski, Marlboro.
Lori?
Lori Blake, Andover.
Hi Judy, want to do roll call for us?
Judy Benson, Clerk, Marlboro.
Um, Rob?
Rob Schadl, Hebron.
Vin?
Vin Colonna, Hebron.
Jess?
Jessica Dapsis, Hebron.
Joe?
Joe O'Connor, Hebron.
I'm Stephanie Bancroft from Andover. Have I missed any board members? Okay, we'll move on to administration. Scott?
Scott Leslie, Acting Superintendent.
Penny?
Penny Briscoe, High School Interim Principal.
Mike? Michael?
Michael Ceruzi, Middle School Principal.
Okay, I saw Christine Hartwig.
Christine Haring, Director of People's Services.
Okay, are there any other administration that I missed? Okay, Jean, would you like to do roll call? I see you just joined us.
Uh, I don't have a list of people to do. Yes, you mean just me?
Just roll call.
Sorry, Jean Wilson, Marlboro.
Thank you, Jean. Um, then Eva?
Eva Gallup, Business Manager.
I saw Mike Schleyhoffer here tonight. Director of Facilities.
Mike Schleyhoffer, Director of Facilities.
Am I missing any other directors or head of departments? All right, and Karen?
Karen DiQuelletto, Board Clerk.
Okay. Have I missed any student representatives? Okay. Is Dana here tonight?
I didn't see her, but let me, let me text her to see if she's coming.
Okay. All right, um. Have I missed anybody? Okay, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro community engagement and attendance at Board of Ed public meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Ed may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Ed is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Ed is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Are there any public comments? Public comments? Can these just speak out? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the addition or deletion of agenda items. Are there any items to add or delete from the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the Student Representative Report. Lily?
Um, there's not much to report. Juniors have SATs coming up next week, so that's a tad stressful. But it's a little weight off our shoulders because some schools are test optional next year, but still a pretty big deal for us. Other than that, there's not much going on. I think there's, there's mixed opinions about us going full in school. I personally am very excited for it. Others not so much, but yeah, that's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. I have nothing for the Board Chair Report, so we're going to move on to number seven, Report of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Stephanie. Well, I, I think I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that we are to the day, a year from the day that Connecticut closed schools. It was Friday, the 13th in March was the last day that we were, you know, full in school last year when we got the notice that we were closing at the end of the afternoon. I assumed that we might be out for two weeks or so. That I imagined that we would have been out the rest of last year and certainly a very different year this year. And, and we all know what an extraordinarily challenging year this has been for our families and our community. I know many of our families and community members in three towns have lost loved ones, they've lost jobs. It has been a challenge that certainly none of us saw coming. Having said that, I, I, I think it's appropriate for me at this time to publicly thank all of the Ram teachers, the Ram support staff, the administrators, the secretaries, the custodians, our, our food service staff, for the extraordinary work that they have done in making a very challenging situation into one in which all of our students at least had the chance to continue to engage in school, regardless of what challenges they may be experiencing at home or we are experiencing within the communities. We know how challenging this has been for our students and our parents, and I also want to thank them for all that, all of their hard work and their efforts to persevere and to make this completely crazy year, make some sense out of it, and to continue to engage in school. And I know I'm probably going to start sounding like the Grammy Awards, but I also want the Board of Ed members, you have done a remarkable job of supporting the Ram students and the Ram staff, and for that I am eternally grateful. It's important, as we do our work through a very, very difficult year, to have that support throughout the community, so I'm very grateful for that. I wouldn't want to end on a a note of, of just reflecting back and how difficult the year has been because I, I do see a extraordinary light at the end of the tunnel. At this point, all of the Ram staff members have had an opportunity to be vaccinated. There are continual opportunities for our staff members who may not have been vaccinated yet to get their vaccines. We are seeing lower cases in the community, and of course, we are actively preparing, as Lily mentioned, to get everyone back to a full reopening. We couldn't be more excited to look forward to welcome our students back on the 29th. We are seeing some signs of normalcy. We unfortunately had to cancel our Evening of the Arts last year. This year on June 1st, we'll be hosting a live Evening of the Arts event at the Mansfield Drive-In. It won't be quite like it used to be, but at least it will be a live event in which our community and school members will be able to gather. I know Dr. Briscoe and the high school administration are working with Ram parents and Ram students to organize something akin to hopefully what a, what a prom should look like. Again, it might look different, but we're certainly very hopeful, and we're actively working on what some of those end-of-the-year senior activities might look like, and certainly hopeful that we'll be able to pull together a graduation that looks a little more normal than what we may have grown accustomed to. So I'm looking ahead and I see a lot to be optimistic about. I, I think that the, the, the results that we've gotten from our survey are very encouraging right now, about 87 of our family, 87% of our families are indicating that they'll be sending their students back to school. So we are really looking forward. We think that we have a great plan in place to keep our students and our staff safe and to get everyone back in school and hopefully start to return to a more normal school climate. So it's been a crazy year, and I know we still have the journey ahead of us. It's, uh, it's not quite over, but I think there's a lot, lot of reason for optimism at this point, so. Thank you, Steph. Stephanie, I think you're mute.
That always happens. Um, okay, we're going on to the Consent Agenda. Approval of Minutes for February 22nd, March 1st, and March, um, March 1st and March 1st. Swiss at the end, on the agenda. Enclosures 8.1A, 8.1B, and 8.1C. As well as 8.2, Request for Unpaid Leave of Absence for Tiffany Giannini and Lindsay Cushing. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move to approve the Consent Agenda as shown in the presentation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Okay, I'm not hearing any discussion. We'll go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Has Kathleen been able to make it yet? She's not present, okay. Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so unanimously passes. Okay, number nine, Old Business. Proposed Budget Update.
Stephanie, actually, I have no updates at this time, so our budget continues to stand at a combined 1.86%. I think the only, only business at hand right now is what's coming later in the meeting to look at the surplus funds, but right now, we have, I have no updates to the proposed budget.
Okay. Number 10, New Business. So financials.
All right, good evening, everyone. Under your enclosure 10.1A, you have the net projections. So we, I am proposing at the end of February 28th, 2021, that there is a net favorable position of $652,282. In light of these, this net favorable favorable position, the Superintendent and I are recommending that the dampers, the middle school and high school fire doors be resolved since we have the fortunate place to have the money in this year's budget. The transfers for that will be coming up. For electricity, I've been reporting that we're supposed to get an increase. That's what was reported to us. At the moment, the increase has been stalled. PURA is still considering rendering a decision. I don't know if you noticed last week, PURA and United Illuminating had reached a decision, and they will not be increasing their rates. No word on Eversource as of yet. As of February 27th, the district received its first payment for excess costs in the amount of $493,014. The second payment is expected at the end of May. There are no significant changes for the Capital Improvement Fund. We're still awaiting the DOT project to be audited. And People's Services is still in the process of tracking IEPs and adjusting purchase orders accordingly. Are there any questions in regard to items that I went over in enclosure 10.1A?
Eva, this is Joe. What, what's your projection of the with Eversource, if they are to? What, what's the rate action they're looking at giving us?
So the rate that they're looking to give all Connecticut residents that they service is an increase of 8.2%. Eversource is quoted in a Hartford Current article to say that they would like to see it spread out in two increases, so they would do half and half. But I guess it's PURA that makes them do, or report on rate increases every six months, according to this article. So it seems like Eversource is trying to blame PURA, but I don't think that PURA sets a rate increase, so it'll be interesting to see what transpires, considering we're still in a COVID situation and many people are still struggling.
Thank you for that. I did read that, but what, what is the financial hit?
Oh, financial hit for, oh, I'm sorry. I did, I'm sorry, I didn't calculate it out because it's supposed to happen by May 1st, and I guess I could have calculated it out based on that, but I'm really hoping that we won't see it until after the fiscal year ends.
And is it, is it retroactive, or is it?
No, it is, it is, it is not retroactive. I did ask that of our consultant. It is not retroactive, so it would be as of May 1st if that's when they, when they put it into effect.
So May 1st and our, our fiscal year closes June 30th, right? So you're looking at three
Two months.
Two months? Can you, can you ballpark it?
Yeah, so originally from January to June, we, we were, I was putting out a $16,500 in increase. So for two months, I would think that would be negligible at best. January, February, March, April, June, 26. So it'd be like less than $5,000, around $5,000.
Okay. So $5,000 increase per month, or, or altogether?
For the two months together.
Okay. I have another question on the cap, on the on the capital. I gotta find it. I'm sorry, if anybody else has a question, then let them go, but I'll, I'll come back to it real quick here.
I have, I have a question, Stephanie.
Go ahead, Sue.
Um, so then the money, the $652, a lot of money. Do we have any, and I know I have all of the documentation, but, but why, why is it so high?
Because we've been out of school for the month of, well, starting November, I forget what date we went out, and I think it was November 18th. We didn't return back to school till about January 11th, if I'm not mistaken. So at that time, there was absolutely no transportation being provided. Students aren't in the building, so outside of feeding, we have reduced costs for many other items that, when you're doing things online, you're not spending as much as you're doing things when you're in person. Now that the students are coming back into the building, where I'm noticing an uptick in purchase orders being placed. But there's still, you know, there's still lots of money on the table, so we have, I believe, tuition was an area, we had no summer school, so we didn't run any transportation for special ed summer school. There are many areas that there were monies that we did not spend.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It would be helpful if, because I, we'll probably continue to have this number over and over again. It would just be helpful if you could outline in bullet format some of those reasons why.
Sure, that was presented back in meetings ago, I believe in a finance subcommittee meeting. I want to say in November or December, around that point, I had some items that I had presented, so I can dig that out again and update that.
Okay, that was given to the entire board or just the Finance Committee?
Both. So actually, if you look at last month's cover letter, there should be some information there as to the unexpected increases that I thought we were going to have, and electricity being one of them. But many of those items have already been billed, and so I was revamping to get to this point, so, but I can create something for you for next month.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm all set, Stephanie. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sue. I just want to, I'll make it known that Kathleen's joined the meeting at this point. Hi, Kathleen.
Hi, everybody. Sorry for being late.
Mr. O'Connor, do you still have that question?
I, I do. It's on the, the second page of the capital non-recurring, Eva. Can you give me the, the, the last one, your, it's your adjustment, you're adjusting $16,760. What, what is that for?
Oh, so originally when COVID started, and I want to say this happened back in June or July, we had a meeting. I'm not sure if you were present or not. We had to buy the filters and something else, and so there was money in capital non-recurring. I forget what meeting we were at, if it was last month or the month before. We put the money back into capital non-recurring from the operating budget.
Okay, so that, you took, the negative 16 was a was put back in, or is that a, it says transfer, so I'm, that's why I was confused. You transferred it?
So we, right, so we transferred the money back in, so we made capital non-recurring whole again.
So where's the other line item that shows that deduction? Is there something there that shows that?
Um, so you would have to look at the month previous to this, but I can have Mr. Leslie send you that in the weekly update.
That's how I can go back. If it was in last month, I can go back and look at that.
And I'm not sure if it was last month, but it was definitely done, so it might have been November, it may have been December.
Okay, and then the next item is Town of Hebron. What is that for? $94,473?
That's for the DOT contingency and additional funds. We have a purchase order to the Town of Hebron because Town of Hebron is paying the bills, so we're paying our portion to them directly.
Okay, and then the last one is Integrated Technical Systems. Is that the, the cameras?
That's a very good question.
Is it the exact same amount as your
No, so, no, I believe that might be the filters. That's a very good, that, yeah. Mr. Schleyhoffer might be able to answer that, but hold on a second. I think he just texted me the answer.
Eva, the fire magnet door holders.
Oh, that's what it was. Yeah, so for the middle school to, to hold the, the doors open, we put magnets on, so when the fire alarm goes off, the doors release via magnet. That and the air filters were what we purchased for COVID-related purposes, and that's the money that was going back in.
Okay, so these are just coincidental that they're the same number?
Oh, it should be the same number, because I took it out and then I'm repaying it back. That's why I was making it whole, the 1650.
Yeah, but that's not COVID, right? You just said there are fire magnets or magnets, right? Door magnets?
It was for COVID-related purposes. That's why I'm returning the, the funds back to that account.
Okay, okay. All right, and then the last question is, so if I'm reading this correctly, we have a balance for this year of $146,242, is that correct?
Correct.
And we still have things obviously pending to spend for the capital, is that correct?
So if you notice, there's three columns, I'm gonna, or four columns, I'm gonna go from the right, far right, it says REM, I'm not sure what that stands for. Then there's Budget Balance Percentage. So you're, you're, oh, sorry, Percentage Remaining, sorry, and then Budget Balance. So that's the amount left completely, because right next to it, you have the word encumbrance, so that is anything that still has an open purchase order or amount spoken for. So that $27,000 is what still has funds that are being held, because we have outstanding debt for our invoices to pay off. The 146 should be available, correct?
Well, it's not, it's not available, we're, unless there's something remaining, right? I mean, that, we have it earmarked for that, for reasons, though, correct?
No, because I believe if you look at the $96,000, we were uncertain how much we were going to need for our capital, our DOT contingency, and anything excess, so the, the majority of that is actually from the DOT project, which I believe should be, but don't quote me, the line above it is $96,935. And then we have some other items that did not come into all the way down, but we started this fiscal year with some, and available balance, because the projects that we thought we were going to do didn't come in as high, but I can get one more detailed report on that.
Well, that's where I was going with it. I think most of this money that's, is for DOT though, right? So we're still, even though we've allocated money, we still don't know what the outcome of that is.
Correct, right, correct, because what, we have to wait for the DOT audit to come through before we can officially say that it's, it's available, because the state itself does the audit of the DOT project. So until they officially give us word that it is finalized, we can't touch that money.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Are there any more questions on that portion of this presentation? Okay, hearing none. The next report is the Student Activity Report. So in an effort to assist students with the lack of fundraising, since we are trying to plan for junior proms and senior proms and needing to put deposits down, administration has requested that the, we try to see if we can help the fundraising efforts. So a decision was made to take the interest and divide it between the 7th through the 12th grade classes. So we created, you'll see a junior, a new freshman, two new freshman classes, so that everyone got the money spread out evenly and accordingly. The bank, the balance matches all the bank statements. Are there any questions on student activities? Hearing none, going to 10.1C, which is the Food Service Monthly Sales and Expenditure Report. We are hanging in there and using the budget to help offset for invoices that are coming through. Currently, I, for the, as of the time that I wrote this for the board meeting, I did not have the February invoice in hand. I didn't have a chance to look at it before tonight's meeting. My apologies for being unprepared. But at the moment, including the liability count, which is student balances, we have a, a balance of $68,709 at the end of February. It's still projected that we're going to have a loss. However, I'm hoping and hopeful that when all the kids come back and are able to purchase more à la carte, that we can get to a less of a negative balance. And I apologize if anyone hears my dog barking, but she's downstairs and I'm upstairs, and are there any questions on the food service?
I have one, if nobody else has one. So what, when you say a loss, what do we, because we have, we've had hardly any business, right? And we've known that we've been giving, trying to give away free, free meals, and, and we haven't been successful probably with that, so what, again, what are we looking at as far as potential?
So we're looking at about a projected loss of about $137,000 in that range. And so currently, what, as meals are served, we get reimbursed for each meal served to the students. So breakfast and lunch, we get reimbursed by the federal government for those meals served to the students. We also have staff meals that we offer. Staff is able to purchase lunch at $4.50 for a regular meal, or $5.50 for a, a higher-end meal. That seems to be working well. Staff members are partaking in the meals and we're recouping some, but students are also still able to buy items à la carte. So that means if they want to go in and get some chips or an apple, that they wanted something extra, a water bottle, they can go in and still purchase those items.
And are you factoring in that $137,000 loss in your $652,000 projection?
I am not. Because that changes on a monthly basis, and this was, so if, in last month's meeting, you would still have seen the previous, the way that I had written it before, and I was looking for an update, and I didn't get the update in time for this meeting, but I will have everything updated for you for next meeting.
That's okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Are there any further questions on food service, student activity, or the net projection?
Yes, Eva, can you share with us the pretend, the possible swing, given history, and what you know that, that we could see with food service before the end of the year?
Oh, that, I will. I'll have it for you for next, next meeting.
Oh, okay, that'll be included. Thank you.
Yep.
This is Jean. Just a, a comment that I heard somewhere other schools had done, which, you know, it's too late now, but for next time. I think they were harnessing senior transportation buses or whatever to actually bring the food to people at their houses. I don't know if we were doing that or not, but it, it might be one I noted for planning for next time. bring the food to people at their houses. I don't know if we were doing that or not, but it, it might be one I noted for planning for next time.
So Jean, that, that's a complicated area to be taking food to people's houses because in a normal food service situation, we cannot overly overtly identify people who are taking food. That's one of the federal guidelines or not, that might be on free and reduced. So during this situation, everyone is considered free, but not everyone is partaking of the meals. So in a regular bus situation, they might go door-to-door. It makes it a little bit harder at this point to, because we have some people who are door-to-door. We have some that are group stops. So it, it just, in the beginning, when we were doing the meal pickups at Andover Elementary, Marlboro, and at our school, we actually had vans that brought the food to those locations to help, so that people could go to their own town buildings to get the food. In a regard for door-to-door pickup, it makes it a little bit questionable, in my opinion.
I get that. That makes sense. Thank you.
Eva, do you have any kind of delivery service inside the school? Because I know my daughter, she eats in the library a lot. Is there somebody who would like bring it to her? Maybe they, you know, changed their mind and didn't feel like walking to the cafeteria or wherever you have them set up to get it?
Right. So at the high school, the administration made pods. So we have three or four stations that are set up so that the kids don't have to go to the cafeteria to go get the food. This helps the, to help socially distance. In the middle school, we have two areas that have the same, that worked with the middle school prince administration to get those areas set up so that the kids can come from their teams and each class is let out separately so that they're not all gathered together in one area. So they're all social distanced.
So you don't have like a cart that you would go around to different areas where the kids would eat to try and provide for them?
Correct. We don't have a cart because we don't have the manpower to be able to do that with the different stations that are already established. Sorry. She came upstairs.
Eva, have, have, has the, the company reduced their services in any capacity as far as staff and, in that, in that way or not?
Oh, no. They, they've been more than supportive in, in working with and trying to, they're actually trying to hire two more staff members for the full return. I know that they, as of Friday, Thursday or Friday, they were able to hire one more person. They were actually having a hard time getting qualified applicants to apply. So they're gonna do their best with the full reopening to make sure that it all works. We had to, but now that we're back in the building, we're scaling back the distant learning meal pickups a little bit to, to make sure that the end people, the people in the building are able to be fed and are, everybody's manned accordingly.
That's where I was going with it. So thank you for that explanation because I was wondering if they had, obviously, you know, through reductions that we now ramping back up, we don't have adequate, or they don't have adequate staff. So, but thank you.
You're welcome. If there are no further questions, I will proceed to item ten point two, which is the budget appropriation transfers for the Board of Ed to make a motion on. So as per Board's policy, I come to you with transfers that were completed in the system on a monthly basis. The grand total from October twenty-sixth through March fifth is five hundred and ninety-one thousand, twenty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. Most of these transfers are COVID-related in one way, shape, or form. We do have staff personnel transfers. Most, many of them are going back into unallocated personnel. So I made a cover sheet that is a summary so you can see the entry number and the dollar amounts or the transaction that happened. And then the backup is the individual journal entries for your review. At this time, are there any questions that I can answer before the Board, the Board makes a motion on this?
I make a motion that we accept the, approve the transfers of, since there's no discussion of, let me get to the number. Five hundred and ninety-one thousand, twenty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents.
Is there a second?
Rob will second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
There was, actually, there were some.
Yes.
They had like ten percent with.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
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 Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so it passes unanimously.
Okay. And now ten point two B. Thank you for that. So ten point two B is the fire damper and fire door replacement slash repairs that were identified during our regular fire inspection. It's my understanding that as part of your packet, you received a letter, or maybe it was this weekly's update, that you received a letter from the fire marshal stating that we are on notice that we have to have a plan or have these completed. So I broke these out individually so that you can see what was going on. So for the fire dampers and however you guys choose to do the motion, I'll, I'll leave that up to you guys, but the fire dampers will cost thirty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. So you'll see a spreadsheet that identifies which account numbers I was taking them from. And behind that is brand services quote for the work. Brand Services is the only company that handles dampers or is, is the company that handles dampers. And we feel comfortable utilizing Brand Services for this repair. For the middle school doors, you'll also see the accounts that I would be touching for this transfer. And then you'll see a proposal quote from Accurate. Accurate is actually the second quote that we received for this work. Brand was the first one. What Mr. Schleyhoffer, Mr. Leslie and I have noticed is that Accurate's pricing was a little bit less than Brand's, not by much. It wasn't much to speak of. But at least their proposal actually shows and explains what type of work they're going to be doing as opposed to us needing to look up the fire codes to see what work they were proposing to be done. And then the, so for the middle school doors, it will be forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. And then for the high school, it's the same kind of setup for you. And the total for the high school is a hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Are there any questions before action is taken?
This is Joe. I have some questions. I, I had a discussion with, with Scott about this and Scott Leslie. Because I couldn't make the meeting last week. So I'm just gonna share with the Board that I was concerned that this is a, a code that we, you know, we've never had this inspection before, but I, I feel that, you know, it, it warrants looking into, you know, we built the building. Again, this is another problem that none of us have any onus on, but this school was built, was, you know, apparently, we didn't meet code with fire doors. I did hear a rumor that, that, that the flooring was taken out and therefore the doors don't meet the code after the new floor was put back in, and Mr. Leslie identified that as not being factual. So I'm, I'm just, again, just floored that, that, you know, we have these deficiencies in our building. And this is a surprise once again at the tune of two hundred thousand dollars that we have to comply with. It shows that the need for having reserves, number one. Number two, you know, obviously, it's a safety concern, so it, it, it obviously needs to get done. But I have a question for Mr. Schleyhoffer as to why this, this audit was never done in previous years or, you know, why are we at two thousand twenty-one finding this out?
Joe, it was a request from the fire marshal to have the inspection done.
Mike, is it a state requirement or is it at the, at the request of the fire marshal? A fire marshal is the Town of Hebron Fire Marshal, not the, we, there's a state fire marshal too, correct?
Correct.
So was this at, at the state fire marshal level or, or is it at the Town of Hebron level? And I'm just, I'm just trying to ask the question because I didn't get to go to that meeting. I would have asked my questions then. But I'm just, because you're the facility director, I'd just like to know, how did this really transform? Because I think the Board should know that because it is facilities, but we haven't really had, you know, nobody was at that meeting other than the Board Chair last week. And it's, I think it's important that we understand. Talk a little bit about the findings and how they found this and what's this inspection all about, you know, fifteen years later, you know? That's, I'd just like to know that.
It was a request from the local fire marshal to have the inspection done. And I can certainly get Scott a copy of the, the code that talks about the inspection as well. As soon as the fire marshal returns, I believe he's, he's out this week.
And Mike, isn't this, this type of inspection is typically started with a recommendation from the fire marshal? I mean, this isn't something that we, I don't think have ever done since the building has been open. This was the first time that the fire marshal requested the inspection. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Yeah.
And Joe, I don't know if it helps any, but in the memo that I wrote, the first introduction paragraph is that basically this was supposed to, I don't know if it's supposed to is the right word, and is supposed to be an annual inspection as of two thousand and ten. The local fire marshal assists us in ensuring that we follow, and that's for the doors. Dampers would, should have been inspected a year after the installation of the dampers. And so apparently that was never done either. So these are deficiencies based on lack of follow-up, I guess, would be a better way. Because the dampers would have been discovered relatively soon after the building project was completed. So this is just something that we finally caught up. It's my understanding that the fire marshal is newer. So I think he's trying to do his due diligence, but being one in a town that has to deal with many buildings, I'm sure it's not that easy to keep, keep up with everything that he needs to keep up with also.
I appreciate that. I, I think from, you know, looking at a higher level, you know, I understand, you know, my discussion with Scott Leslie was, I support the dampers because that is a serious problem. I, I understand that. So I, I'm okay with that. It's the rest of the stuff that I have a little bit of heartburn with spending this kind of money. I understand the safety, but it goes back to, you know, what else are we deficient in that, you know, that we're, that we're gonna have to, you know, eventually, you know, pay the fiddler with or, you know, pay up on. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, we had a fire marshal in the school when constructed. It just seems like none of this stuff was, 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 probably maybe at the time it wasn't code or compliant at that point, but, but it's, it's really hard to just sit here and justify. We have to keep on defending the, the, the poor workmanship of this school. That's all I have. So I, I guess if anybody else has anything else, I'm done.
Joe, I think one of the challenges that if, if we're understanding what we're hearing correctly is that because the fire door inspections became a requirement in two thousand and ten, they would not have been in place when the building was first built. The dampers definitely should have been inspected. We're led to believe that due to the limited person power in terms of the, the inspectors and the marshals that the state had earmarked different industries to be, to kind of focus the inspections. And they had just finished recently with a long-term focus on nursing homes and congregant living facilities and now are moving on to schools. So we're probably not that unusual that they're starting to hit schools just to try to manage the people that they have available to do this type of work. I think, I'm sure in two thousand and ten, if, if every building required of inspection went for the inspection, there, there probably wouldn't happen anyway with, with not enough people.
Yeah, but Scott, I mean, there's fire suppression in the building. There's fire doors on the, on the, on the, on the, in the, in the, every classroom. That was a code. I mean, I don't think the code has changed that much, but I look at this stuff here and I, and I'm gonna move on. But I mean, I, I just, I look at it as like screws, putting screws in the door. Things of the gap is exceeded, you know, why, why is that? And I mean, I, I'm not looking for an answer from you because I, I think I know the answer already, but it's just, it's really just discouraging to sit, to sit, you know, look at this number of a hundred and, you know, fifty thousand dollars that we gotta fix doors and gaps and, and some of this we can, I hope we're gonna, so there's no, there's no way we can reduce this number, right? We can't put, everything that's here is, is the, is a modification?
Correct. So everything that has been identified, this is the recommendation to repair the, what has been identified or the deficiency. So it's, it's sort of no different than the ADA compliance that you are more familiar with in terms of ensuring that sidewalks are a certain level and all of that. So a person from the state comes in, does a, a report, and then it's up to the Board or the district to ensure that, that all gets completed.
But back to my point, Eva, a lot of the ADA issues we had at this school were, were from original construction. So I, I, I guess, you know, I would hope that we're gonna be looking at a preventative plan. If the fire marshal is coming in on, on this note, is there anything else, Mike, that, or Eva, that, that we have not, we're not, you know, there's any other inspections that the fire marshal is gonna fight, cite us on? Is that, you know, is he, is this the only one he's looked at or is there any other deficiencies that we should be concerned about?
So the inspections happen on an annual basis. As was stated, this one is newer to schools. So that's probably why we're getting hit all at once. But once these are repaired, we're going to ensure that, or we are annually, we, we, whatever comes up is usually repaired immediately. So I don't think we're gonna see the same size of deficiencies as this. I mean, so there's normal wear and tear normally on, on any kind of building. There's settling of the building. So I'm not saying any of that is what the reasonings are behind this, but I'm thinking that this is probably one of the last sizable amounts that you're gonna see that is due to either the building project or the lateness of identifying the deficiencies.
Okay. Thank you very much, both of you.
Eva, this is Mary. I just have a question about the contract or proposal from Accurate.
Okay.
I'm not sure if this is a problem or not, but I don't know about if there's a time limit on dates of contracts. But they have, they have two thousand and ten as the date of the contract. It says three, nine, ten on both of their contracts. So, I mean, it's probably not a big deal, but just in case there's some kind of limitation on that.
Yeah. Now, before, before we finalize anything, this is more so for the, for our transfers. And I'm sure this was a rush, and I'm surprised that it says two thousand and ten on it. But we'll make sure that everything is copasthetic. This is really just to give us a better, and we asked them to rush it because we only had Brand in our possession. And actually, the fire marshal, the local fire marshal told us that the state actually uses Accurate, and all Accurate does is doors. This is their specialty is doors. So that's why we feel more comfortable going with them. But yes, I will make sure that the contract is, is accurate and dated correctly to make sure that that doesn't get us into any trouble down the road. Thank you for that.
No problem. Thank you.
And Scott, did we, did you talk about timing? Or did Eva talk about time? This has to be done this year?
So actually, Accurate is willing and able to do it all of spring break. So when the school is. So when the school is closed, they'll be able to have it all complete.
I think, Joe, too, to answer your question is that it either has to be, because we, we posed that question to the Fire Marshal, and the response we got was that it either had to be done this, this year or we had to show that we were working in good faith to have it completed next year. So it's not like we have five years to, you know, stretch it out.
Not like the ADA, yeah?
No, correct.
I'm sorry, Eva, could you just tell me the price again that, that you were quoted?
For the dampers is $34,300. For the middle school doors, it's $49,414. For the high school doors, it's $112,838. And this is, this is about around $3,000 less than the first quote that we had from Brand Services doing the door repair also.
Did Brand Services provide this, the, the inspection?
They did. There's only certain companies that do the inspections and they also do the repairs.
So how confident are we then with Accurate's number? How did they, did they come in and inspect the building?
No, no, no. So we provided Accurate with the inspection report, and Accurate used the inspection report and devised their plan of action based of that.
So this is Jean. Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
How, like, is this, you must do this, it's mandated, once the inspection's done? Do we have time to investigate what other schools have done? You know, what are the parameters here?
Um, Jean, you know, just to, if I could just share the, the wording that we received from the Fire Marshal. The, as per the 2018, as per 2018, and the Fire Prevention Code, during the inspection, they found the doors and damper deficiencies. The life, these life safety issues have been identified and need to be corrected. Regional School District 8 is in violation of the Fire Safety Code. And now that it is known, the liability is now on the school district. If any problems, injuries or damage occur. The, a plan for corrective actions to remedy this needs to be submitted to the Fire Marshal within 10 days. So that's 10 days from March 11th. In, in our discussions with him, we were told that, again, if we didn't address it this year, then it would have to be addressed next year.
Okay, that answers that question. Thank you.
I have another question. This is kind of on, on an ethical standpoint. I mean, if I was the other vendor, I would be a little, you know, well, let me, let me don't say that. Let me just put it this way. Does the other company, Accurate, have capabilities? Are they licensed to give an inspection?
Mr. Schleyhopper, can you answer that question?
My understanding, they don't do fire door inspections.
So they only do the repairs, Mike? They wouldn't be someone that we would hire for the inspections?
Correct.
So there's only one company that does the inspections?
Mike?
Sorry, I was muted. No, there's, there's a few other companies in Connecticut that, that are licensed to do fire door inspections. We just hired Brand Services to do the inspections based on, we've used them as a vendor in the past for fire issues.
Okay, I'm going to peel the onion back a little further for you. How much did we pay for the inspection?
Oh, it was $5,000.
Okay, so we paid $5,000 for the inspection. That makes me feel a little bit better from the, from the other side of the coin. So thank you.
No problem.
Do you need the motion to be broken down by numerically or could it just be one big number?
Um, actually, for, for audit purposes, why don't we break it down numerically individually, please? I think that'll be cleaner for them.
Okay, are we ready for a motion? We'll start with the dampers at $34,300. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to replace the dampers at $34,300.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yep.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob? Vin?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Rob, was that a yes?
Yes, it was.
Okay. All right. The dampers pass unanimously. We'll go on next. Is there a motion for the doors at $49,414 for middle school?
I make a motion to purchase the middle school doors at $49,419, was it?
$14.
$14. $14. Thank you. Let's replace them.
This is Jessica, second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. It passes. And lastly, the high school doors at $112,838. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Sue made the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Vin.
Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, number 10.3, Annual Healthy Food Certification.
So this, this is a yearly requirement that the, the board a number of years ago agreed to participate in the healthy food certification. This essentially, the short and simple explanation is that this requires all of our, any, any organization within the school that serves food, whether it be our, at this point, Witsen serving lunch and breakfast, or our school store and what they can serve. Any of our fundraisings must comply with the Healthy Foods Initiative. And as a result, we do receive monies from the state that we wouldn't ordinarily be receiving. So we've, we've been doing this. This has been a, a program that the board and the district have been participating in for a number of years. We are required each year to make and pass a motion, and the motions are very explicit. They're in the packet. I'm happy to put them on my screen. I don't think this is necessarily a agenda item that we're, you're welcome to debate and discuss, but again, it's, it's more of a pro forma item that we renew each year. That certainly, from the school's point of view, it's worked fine for us, and so we're happy to continue our participation. They, our food providers have been able to make it work well, and we do receive some funding in return. So it's a, a bit of a win-win. So if there's certainly any discussion, we can open it up for discussion, but I'm also happy to post the agenda on the, on my screen. And if somebody would be willing to read the items, that would be very helpful. Let me share my screen.
Scott, was this part of our packet? I'm just not seeing it in the.
It is. It's 10.3?
I would agree with Lori, Scott. I don't have a 10.3.
Yeah, I actually don't have a 10.3 through six that I see on the agenda, but I don't have those in the folder.
I have them.
The 10.3 was a single page, so I don't know if it got caught up in anything.
Hmm.
Everything should have been entered from Jan, right? On the link we got on Wednesday, it says.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not in my packet unless it's a.
But some of you do.
I, I have it, but I, I'm looking at it from my, the mail, not from online.
Same with Jean.
Yes, I have it as well. It's, if you look, it's dated March 4th. It's a memo if you do have it.
Okay. Didn't receive my packet yet in the mail.
I didn't receive my packet either, so I'll go through the screen.
Yeah, let's just go off the screen.
So I do have it on the screen. If, you know, what we're required to do is, by statute, is to have each of these motions read in full and the board vote in the affirmative. If you vote yes, for one, then you must also vote yes for options two and three.
Okay. So would you like me to read, read this and then take the vote?
Sure, that would be fine. See, just, we need to read each one. I, I believe, Eva, we need to do each one separately?
Yes, each one has to be separately and they have to be read in its entirety because otherwise the state comes back at us.
Okay. Number one, healthy food option. Pursuant to CGS Section 10215-F, Regional School District 8 certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30, 2022. The certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or by non-school organizations and groups. So I'm going to go down the line with the vote. Judy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob? Rob? Did we lose Rob? I'll go on to Vin?
Yes.
Jess?
Couldn't find the, yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Rob, going back to you?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Okay, so that passes. Number two, exemption for food items. Regional School District Number Eight will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. Three, the food, food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular, extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is a period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held. So we'll vote on that. Judy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Moving on to number three, exemption for beverage items. Regional School District Number Eight will allow the sale to students of beverage items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on a weekend. Two, the sale, the sale is at the location of the event. Three, the beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held. Go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. It all passes.
Thank you very much for that.
Okay, 10.4, reschedule April 19th board meeting.
So, um, this is a, not a have-to-do. It's a, something I, I thought I'd at least bring to your attention. And knowing that we have some board members who, you know, have students in school, I'm going to share my screen again because we have our April board meeting is scheduled for the 19th, which is the Monday of the April vacation, for the RAM April vacation. So I don't know if that is a problem for any board members. It, it could be a problem, you know, for any staff members that we may need to invite to, to a meeting. But I wanted to, again, this isn't a have-to, but it's something that I thought I'd bring to your attention and see if there was any need on anyone's part to maybe look at a different date. What I would probably suggest is that we move it to April 26th, that next Monday, if there's any interest at all in changing the date.
I'm not going to be around. I'm going to be out of state that day.
Do we need to make a motion, Scott?
Someone would need to make a motion to change.
I'd like to.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we change it from the 19th to the 26th of April.
This is Jessica, second that.
Any discussion?
I cannot, oh, sorry about that. Sorry, this is Jean. I'm actually from Concord, Massachusetts. It's one of my sort of sacred holidays to go and see the reenactment of the Battles of Lexington in Concord. So I would just assume that you change it. They don't always hold it on that day, but there are certain things that Concord has never, ever changed. And so I would like to go home and see the reenactments. So if we can do it, that would be great. It's one of my, that and May Day are my two holidays I really like to take.
Sue?
I have a conflict with my other board. If, could we possibly change it to another day other than Monday?
We could. Certainly, if the board is open to another day. Sue, are you thinking another day that week?
You just have to give me another day's date and I'll check. But the 26th, you know, if it's just me, I, I have to miss the meeting. I hate to miss a whole regular board meeting.
We have that, that same week, the week of the 26th. We do have a facilities and a policy meeting on the 27th, and we have non-certified, non-certified staff negotiations on the 29th. So probably the only other day that week would be the 28th.
What if it went the week before? What if it went to the 12th?
If we went to the 12th, we don't have any, there's. If we went to the 12th, we don't have any. There's conflicts the week of the 12th.
The week of the 12th is better for me as well than than going to the following week, the 26th.
Does that give enough time for budget rendering and things like that from the previous month to be in and summarized and things?
Well, I think Eva, you can I know that you can chime in. I think where where Eva will be at that point is we will have had I'm going to share my screen again just so we can see any issues there. We will have had our public budget hearing on April 5th already. So in terms of the 2021-22 budget, we will have had the public hearing on the 5th already. And so that budget will have been approved. It it may make things tight for Eva to get all of the current items, you know, as she looks to kind of finalize the next year's.
Could we do it like later in that week, like the 14th? Will that allow her more time?
Well, so the problem is, is that the packet or the agenda has to be posted on the Wednesday. So I only have from the first to the seventh. So if so, if I'm not so hold on. So if that's seventh is a Wednesday and that gets us to Monday, I'm not sure how many days it really needs to be posted before the 14th.
Hey, if it's just me, it's you guys do what you have to do. You know, I don't want to complicate, overcomplicate things, but I
Sue, it wouldn't just be you. I could not do the if it's if it comes down to the last week of April, I cannot do the 28th.
So I was going to say, we we can make it work for the 12th if that's what needs to be done. So no worries there.
Stephanie, why don't you see who can make it on the 26th, I guess? And if it's just me, it'll probably be a lot easier if you leave it on the 26th.
Okay, I'll go down the line. Judy? Are you free on the 26th?
I I am not.
Okay. Sue is not. Mary?
Yes, I am.
Jean?
Is that a Monday or a Wednesday?
That's a Monday.
Okay, starting in April, I have workshops from 6:00 to 7:30. So I will be late to every meeting that's on a Monday or a Wednesday of that whole month, but I will try to connect as soon as I can.
Okay, Lori?
Sorry, had to go run and get the calendar. Yes.
You are free on the 26th. Okay, Kathleen?
Yes, at this time I'm free.
Okay, Rob?
Yes, I'm free that day.
Vin?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm free as well on the 26th. So it would be Judy and Sue who couldn't make it and Jean would be late. So we would have a quorum.
So Stephanie, why don't you do the same thing with the 12th to see the numbers?
Okay, so I'm going to ask you about the 12th. Judy?
Yes.
Sue?
No.
Mary?
Yes, I am available.
Okay, Jean, you said late. Lori?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jess?
No.
Joe?
No.
And I'm a yes. So we would have Joe, Jess, and Sue would not be able to make the 12th with Jean being late. So that's fewer people on the 12th.
And how many were on the 19th?
You could keep it on the 19th.
No, it's 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 a question. How many? Could you do that? Poll us on that?
Sure. Okay, Judy, 19th?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jean?
Maybe, definitely not certain.
Okay. Question mark. Lori?
No.
Kathleen?
No.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jess?
No.
No?
I'm in training, no.
And I'm a no as well. So that's far fewer.
So it sounds it sounds like the 26th. Is that correct?
26 is the is the least conflict.
And you know, I I can't make it, but that's I'm comfortable with that, given the circumstances. I kept my calendar clean for the date it was scheduled. So but I understand the reasoning and I'm fine with it changing.
Okay, so we have a we do have a motion on the table for that, correct?
Yes.
I forgot to write it down. So
Yep, I had made one.
All right, thank you, Lori. And was there a second on that?
Jessica has a second.
Thanks, Lori.
I I got distracted. Um, okay, so we had our discussion. Anything else? Okay, we'll go to vote that we will have the next regular meeting on the 26th. Judy?
Okay, so I'm going to abstain. And the reason I'm supposed to say the reason is because I cannot make it, but I do I'm not going to oppose it because I understand the reasoning why.
Okay, thank you. Sue?
No.
Mary?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So motion passes with one abstention and one no.
Can I just? Can I ask a question, Stephanie?
Sure, Judy.
I I mean, I guess I didn't really think about it until near the end. But I mean, this is it's it doesn't matter because it passed, I guess, but this is very late to do that, isn't it?
I don't know. I had this meeting in my calendar for this day anyway. I don't know. I I don't know if it was published.
No, it's I I just I I I didn't have it for the following week. So I I don't know. It doesn't really matter, but it's just
I'm kind of I think I think personally, we need to do a better job at looking at the calendar when we are given it before we approve it. So we can make changes at that time. I also see, you know, in August, there's another conflict, you know, it's August 16th is our board meeting, which is a little early and normally we like waiting a little bit in August. So I I think we just should really do a better job as a board to review it before approving the entire schedule because there are others that we all have, you know, other commitments and we plan around these board meetings because I don't like missing board meetings. But we should take a look at, you know, while, you know, while we're doing this, maybe next board meeting, looking at the August 16th one. So we can plan ahead for that as well.
Stephanie, I think that's
Wait till the last minute.
Stephanie, I think that's a great idea. I'd like to ask that we add that to the agenda for August.
Okay. I've noted that. Okay, Karen DiColetto, did you have a question? You wanted some clarification on something?
I'm just concerned because unless I missed it, there was no formal motion started for the health certification. And usually someone, excuse me, has to say, I make the motion, second it. And then you can vote yes to each of the options and then finalize the motion. I just want to make sure that we have the right motion in the minutes. So all that happened was everyone said yes to each option, and I just want to make sure that's sufficient.
Well, I think I think we discussed that we would have to read read them each as written and then vote on it afterward.
Well, typically the motion is made and then it's read. And when I put the motion into the minutes, I have to write it that way and I have to cut and paste everything that was read. And then the motion has to be finalized. I'm just saying that's how I remember doing it in the past. And I just want to make sure the motion's correct or or it'll have to be redone.
Yeah, I I think she's right. I think there has to be someone has to say, I make a motion, someone seconds, and then it gets read. I didn't realize that didn't happen. My apologies.
And you don't have to read that again. You just
Okay.
Okay, can can a board member make the motion and somebody else second it? And since it's already was read and approved? That
I I believe so. I mean, just I would just go back and make an amendment. I mean, I would, you know, I I mean, I don't know 100%, but I can't imagine. It's better than not putting that place at all.
Okay. So
I would have stopped you, but I thought I thought you were going to do like mo option by option with this sort of motion, but
I thought that's what we did.
Till we were done. No, like there was no formal motion started. You just voted on each option. I know it's such a silly thing, but these are how they expect things to be written.
Was that the healthy foods?
Yeah.
10.3?
Yep.
Okay, so I make the motion that we approve the healthy food certification as written in each of the items.
Okay.
Rob will second.
So then you have to take a vote for the whole motion.
Okay.
Why don't you add? Why don't you? Isn't there? Isn't there two other parts to that? That healthy foods is number one. I don't have it. Scott doesn't have it up anymore. I don't have it. So
The motion will be read as so and so made the motion, so and so seconded it, then the everything will be pasted with your vote next to each option, and then the entire motion will be approved with this final vote that you're going to take right now.
Right, that was all that was all part of 10.3 all inclusive.
Yep.
So this we're going to have a vote now to approve the emotion for the all three items.
Okay, do you want us to go through, Stephanie?
We're going to go through. Judy?
You need a second. You need you need a second.
We have we have a second. Yes.
We have Vin and we have Rob.
Rob, sorry.
I vote yes.
Now we're going to vote
Yes.
On all three items. Judy?
Yes, thank you.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Motion passes. Thank you, Karen. Now we move on to Perkins Supplemental Grant Proposal Spring 2021 Approval.
Thank you, Stephanie. This is a Sam Shattle is our Career Technical Education Coordinator and also oversees our Perkins grant writing and the continuous funding of our Perkins program. Sam is with us this evening and I know how much he's appreciated listening to our discussion of fire doors and calendars and healthy foods. So it's it's nice actually having something here that's that's pretty substantive as far as student learning goes. And what Sam has is ask it needs our permission to do. So this will require a board motion and a second and approval is to apply for a grant that will encourage underrepresented students to pursue engineering and STEM careers. And this would involve RAM teachers and outside consultants who would do the research and put together programming that would encourage our stu our under underrepresented students in these areas, in particular, young women to pursue engineering and STEM in IT programming. The grant does require that whatever programs are are started through this, that the district pick up and sustain those programs. Sam has really done a nice job with this grant in that there are no new programs that would require board funding once the initial grant is is spent down. So and I'll let Sam take a minute and add anything that I'm missing out here. But I just wanted to make clear that this, although the grant does require that we sustain any programs that are begun with this, what this grant is doing is really solidifying the programs that we already have in place. So the goal is to bring young women into programs that they're currently underrepresented in. And Sam, I'll let you fill in any blanks that I might have missed on that one.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you for just taking the moment to take a look at this. This we get a Perkins grant every year from the state of Connecticut, trickles down from the federal government and then come to the state, comes to our districts. And this is a supplemental component. So every year, there's kind of above and beyond the opportunity to get some extra money. We've already gotten our Perkins grant this year. So this is a supplemental. So it is more of an option that districts can have. But the focus of this grant is for non-traditional participation. That encompasses a lot of different groups. Unfortunately, a lot of the groups that it does focus on, we don't have those types of groups in our district. But the one group that we can identify with is the non-traditional participation of in IT areas and in STEM areas. You can definitely reverse this into the early childhood program. So we're really looking at, you know, getting those male students into early childhood. But with this focus, it would be the female students going into IT and engineering and manufacturing where our numbers are really low. We've actually had an increase over the past year of females in IT. We had a new teacher come on two years ago and we rebuilt the program into some different programming and pathways and created a Girls Go Cyber Club for after school, which has actually drawn quite a few females into the area. We know from industry and we have a contact who works at Google that we keep consulting with. And he has actually said that it's a it's a huge conversation in industry that happens all the time in really trying to find females and non-traditional participants in these areas. So we would like to apply for the grant. The maximum is $22,315. You don't need to go for all of it, but I always like to go for all of it because the state likes to give their money away. They don't like to hang on to it. So myself and two of our teachers, Eileen Lastrina, who's our engineering teacher, and Jaclyn Wetherell, she's our IT teacher. The three of us would like to gather to work together on this grant. We would be notified on April 16th if we've been approved or denied. And we have until August 31st to encumber all the funds and then September 30th to expend all funds as well. So this is work that is going to happen in late April, May, June, and then over the summer, July and August, to kind of culminate research and pull things together. We have consulted already with an outside communications firm about working with us. And the grant would be paying them a stipend to do some work for us. We really want to target and focus the students where they're at with communication means. So using social media and using TikTok and Instagram and really getting creative so that we can get that message clear and across the students and really try and pull them in and gain their interest. And then in addition, we would like to consult possibly with our contacts at Google to really discuss how to how we make this work the best and really reach these students, this group. So that's it. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Stephanie, I have a question.
Go ahead, Judy.
Sam, thank you for the information. My question is, at one point, I think it something said high needs. And are females just females by themselves determined high needs for this because it's STEM?
Yeah, so the the focus of the grant is really where the what are the areas that are lacking in kind of that non-traditional participation. So when you the grant as a whole is really how can we get that small group that's not participating in this program area to come in? So yeah, that's why we're flipping to females and IT and engineering. If we were to focus the grant on something different like early childhood ed, we would be focusing on how to get males into that program. But this is what we're going to hone in on for
So and I I see I heard something and I got hung up on it. So I'm trying to understand. So it's any girl, it doesn't matter their economics or it doesn't matter if they already were focused on math, it would be any girl. Is that correct? Any female?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, well, that's, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions?
A question from Jean. First of all, I just want to say fantastic. As somebody who's multi-generational, first in everything, my mother was a COBOL programmer. She's 90 years old right now, which will tell you how early she was in the field. She hated the icons because she wanted the command line back, right? So my, my father was a, a, a computer science person, a chemist, but he learned, um, uh, computer programming and he mentored her and I think it's really important and because they were both technical, I was one of the first women in television. And I, you know, in, in the actual, you know, not I wanna be in news, but the actual behind the scenes. I think it's really critical and I applaud this. I think it's wonderful. Is it, is it seed money for something? How, what about the longevity of it? Often these are sort of like, we're planting seeds and then we pick up the bill later. How is that gonna work in the long term?
Absolutely. So there is a sustainability report that we have to use in the application as well, so, um, I will include that, but what's actually pretty fascinating, fascinating to us, but, um, then in our favor is that pulling in the, um, redoing the program in IT and pulling in that new teacher, um, as well as our teacher in engineering, our female numbers have, have already started to increase. Um, so we've actually been able to see this happen even before this grant. So what we wanna do is use this grant really to robustly kind of break through a lot more barriers that we have, um, and do some more research and really dig into things. But in terms of long-term, the grant is focused on really planning this out, reaching our students this year, planning for summer, but we're really going into next year also. We've already got ideas about some programs we wanna run next year, after school clubs that are new that we wanna start and add to. So as Scott mentioned before, there's no funding tied to long-term sustainability because we already have the programs in place and we already have everything running. This grant is really gonna help us just to focus on clearly, clear communication, really having a concrete, solid, kind of first floor, because we already have the foundation, have the first floor all set so that we can really run with it. And our teachers are so incredibly dedicated for their programs to thrive and I am extremely dedicated to the whole department for thriving for our program. So in terms of long-term, this is something that we're gonna be able to keep, um, as, for years to come. It's really kind of jumpstarting us a little bit more.
Great, thanks. I, I'm, I'm also in favor of this sort of men being mentored into education. Uh, they were the best teachers my daughter ever had. She was high energy and she always seemed to do a little better with male teachers because I think their energy level was, not all the time, but they, they really, um, understood her high levels of energy. And so I understand that isn't gonna be the focus. I kind of wish it was too.
But that's actually a great point because what we're gonna learn and what we're gonna be able to do with this, we are going to be able to reverse on our own next year and years to come. So we'll be able to switch gears and actually utilize what we get from this grant into reversal roles.
Okay, is there any other questions?
Yep, I may ask one more question.
Go ahead Judy.
This, Sam, knowing you and, um, Dr., um, Sirusi, Mr. Leslie, everyone, this is probably a stupid question, but I wanna make sure that, that our boys have all these opportunities that, that we're just making RAM richer and deeper and more opportunities for everyone so that boys who wanna do, whether it's education or STEM can do it, and girls who wanna do education or STEM can do it or, or whatever.
Absolutely. Yeah, the, the, actually, the the piece that we really wanna focus on is that our girls are actually scared to even enter the room. They don't, it's, it's too intimidating. They don't understand how things work. You know, the machines can get really intimidating. We wanna make sure that that door is open and that everybody is invited in. Um, and you know, we've got an engineering class right now that has, I think it's got 13 or 14 boys in it and one girl. So that can be intimidating alone. So we're looking really to try to just boost the awareness and break down those barriers of even just stepping foot into that room. But in making sure that we're really ensuring a really, um, collaborative and holistic classroom with yes, both males and females.
And, and I, I could not agree more. And I literally, I have a daughter at a, um, math and science school and she, from a boy who doesn't know her, she was told she only got in because she's a girl. So I could not applaud this enough. So, because we know that that's not true, so. All right.
We're hoping to break all those, not all of them, but we're hoping to break some of those stigmas.
Those, those were not RAM boys who said that. They, that was someone who doesn't, who doesn't even, they, they're not even in a class with her, so. But thank you. I'm glad you're doing this work.
Lori?
Uh, thank you. Um, hi Samantha. I just had a question about how, um, young of grades you're, you intend to try to reach with the project. Um, I know that in, uh, my son's just in seventh grade and, uh, taking Algebra I and one of his friends who was a, who's a girl from Andover, um, was questioning taking it or not and, and talking about how even as early as that, there are fewer girls, um, seeing, you know, in those math classes. So is, is the intent to bring it from, you know, 12 down to seven, or is it more of a high school focus?
Yeah, no, we, we're actually gonna have a district focus. So, um, in seventh grade, they don't have a lot of choice when it comes to their UA. They are taking computer science in seventh grade, so all the students are really getting exposed to that early, which is fantastic. Carrying over from what they've been doing in the elementary school. And we have those discussions with the elementary school. I meet with them to really talk about their STEAM curriculum and make sure that they're bridging appropriately up to us. In eighth grade, they start to get a choice. They get a choice of taking that computer science two, that next level or the production, engineering and technology, but they're both in that STEM area and IT area, which is fantastic, you know, for them. So they really get to dip into that. But, um, another great advantage we have is our teacher of, our IT teacher at the high school, she's also teaching the eighth grade computer science two class. So she's multi-schooled, you know, she's coming down to see those eighth graders, talk with them, work with them. And it's an excellent funnel right upstairs into our high school program, you know, if they're really interested and focused into that. Um, but in addition, we've already been talking, our high school engineering teacher is going to go down and actually touch base with the students that are in eighth grade in the production engineering class. Um, that's gonna be new and an initiative putting forward to this grant. We do it, um, now where our eighth graders come up and see our rooms. This year they did it virtually, but we're really gonna try and go down to the middle school a little bit more to really talk to those eighth graders and, and again, break down the barriers or stigma because they get nervous even just to enter the room or find a room, you know, kind of thing. So our focus is really more so gonna be eighth to 12th, just because seventh doesn't have a lot of choice as they come in. But we're gonna reach, um, yes, going all the way across district as much as we can.
That's great, because when you look at the college and career readiness literature, um, you know, traditionally we focused on those older high schoolers and then we got to the younger high schoolers and, and there, there's many, many more middle school programs now, um, understanding how a longer trajectory of that involvement is, is really what could make a difference. So that's great. That's great to hear.
And Perkins used to not fund anything middle school. Um, they have now, just this year through their, um, through, through Perkins reform and Perkins five, now we are able to spend money, um, to eighth grade. So that is a big, a big change too.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is Jean, just to find a, you know, if you ever want somebody to come in, um, I am in IT. I, I run a mission critical system. I'm one of the, probably still today, few women who are running a, a mission critical system for the second largest private university in Connecticut. I'd be happy to encourage uh, come in and talk about what I do if you ever do that kind of a program, either in the middle school or the high school.
I would love to take you up on that as soon as we open our doors for visitors because of COVID, but that would be fantastic. We could also do something virtual.
Okay, now, um, if I'm not mistaken, you need a motion on this, correct?
Yes, I do, please.
Okay. And how should that read Scott?
I think it can be that the, the, the motion to support, um, the district's application for the Perkins supplemental grant for 2021.
Stephanie, Stephanie, I'll make the motion that the RAM district support the Perkins supplemental grant for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Jean's second.
Is there a discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to vote. Judy?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Ben?
Great work Sam, yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes, great job.
And I'm a yes as well. All right, it passes. Thank you Sam.
Thank you everyone.
Sam, I, I have another possible, possible idea, building on genes or piggybacking on genes is, you know, any of our college students who are possibly studying or successful or who would want to give back because, um, one of the things that I've said at, at past board meetings is that RAM should be so proud of how its students treat each other as they approach college. Um, you know, they reach out to each other even if they don't know them that well, if they're considering a college they're attending and they take them for tours and they answer questions. Um, and I saw it with, with both of my children and I know that, um, they, they are doing this, the same thing um, with other RAM students. And it's kind of like this quiet secret, but it, it's just, it's one of the nicest things and I really believe it's because of RAM's leadership, RAM's culture, RAM's everything that all of, all of you do. So you know, uh, just futuristically, that might be a neat thing to do too.
I appreciate that. And actually, these are really great ideas that I'm gonna put right into our strategic plan that we're gonna submit. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Great. Thank you Sam. And we will keep everyone posted on the success of Sam's application.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to 10.6 surplus discussion of 2019, 21% surplus funds.
Okay, so this is a continuation of our discussion from, um, our last, our last Monday's board meeting um, in terms of how, how the board wants to proceed with, um, allocating the 1% surplus funds. I'm gonna share my screen. I shared a presentation with everybody earlier this evening. And, okay. So I'm, I'm, what I, what I'm, what I'd like to do is to try to just put some, some focus and some context around this is to walk through what, what I would suggest are the options for moving forward. Um, and, and a few of the things to keep in mind as you debate and discuss, um, where we, where we end up. So we're, the, the money that we're looking at is the 2019, 2020 audited surplus. And so this is from last year. The total surplus is $753,931. And very much like from this year, the reason for an extraordinarily large amount of money left over at the end of the year was really due to last year's COVID experience and shutting schools down in March, not running transportation for the rest of the year and so many of the other things that, um, cost us money. So for example, um, you know, we, we canceled the spring season last year. So there were large swaths of, of money that just didn't get spent. So hence, a significant, um, surplus. The amount that we already have have earmarked for the three towns is the $448,972. This is the amount of the $753,000 above and beyond the 1% surplus. The 1% surplus amount, the $304,959 is the amount that the Board of Education um, can allocate for either capital non-recurring projects, sick and severance pay, or back to the towns to, um, offset their levies for the RAM budget. One of the, just to continue with, with a little bit of background information and you each have this, um, this material and we'll post it on the website in the morning, but this um, gives us back from 2006 through 2013, um, the surplus amounts that were distributed to the three towns. This is during this period of time, we didn't have a bifurcated capital budget. So any of the capital projects were, that were completed were part of the operating budget. So they were in some cases, they made, they may have been budgeted not necessarily for capital expenses, but in a, like a, an equipment expense or something along those lines. So, uh, much, much more difficult to pull those out, but you can see that these are the years that, um, going back to 2006, that each year surplus money was distributed to the three towns. And there was a total surplus between 2006 and 2013 of about one and a half million dollars. And again, that was distributed um, based upon the population density of, of students from each of the three towns. From 2014 to the present gets a little, um, a little foggy or in that, as you can see in 2014 to 17, um, the money was used for, um, capital projects so that it, it wasn't necessarily distributed back to the towns to offset the levy. Um, in 2018 and 2019, that, yeah, well, that brings us up to the present. So this is still unfinished business in that we are still debating what to do with the 3,000, 304,000. But you can see that, um, for a number of years, the practice was to bring it back to the towns and again, for a total of about one and a half million dollars from 2006 to 2013. Oops, and then, um, more recently, we had, um, we distributed um, about $718,000 back to the towns. Um, there's a question about the, what capital projects? And so this becomes much easier and clearer to present when we started to bifurcate capital from the, um, operating budget. And so this simply gives us a list of the capital projects that were budgeted beginning in 2017. Um, and you can see the budgeted amount, you can see the, what we actually spent. Any of the extra money remains in capital non-recurring and it might get earmarked for, um, for another project. So 2017, 18, $289,000 was, was budgeted for capital in 2018, 19. $243,000 was budgeted for capital. 2019, 20, we had $516,000 budgeted for capital. Last year, 2020, 20, or this current year, 2020, 21, $343,000 earmarked for capital. This is, we're, we're still in the process of some of these projects are ongoing. For example, the drainage of the competition field, so we don't have a, a final, um, final resolved numbers on this particular, um, example. So this gives you some historical, um, perspective in terms of what was returned to the towns and what our capital um, budgets looked like over the last few years. When we, um, part of the discussion from, from last week was if, you know, the, the, the facility subcommittee created the $299,000 proposed capital budget, which is still alive and well and sitting in our proposed budget process. Um, these were the items that are in our long-term capital plan that were earmarked for this year, but the facility subcommittee chose not to include in the proposed budget, and that was for a number of reasons. One, the, most of the items in the proposed $299,000 budget are health and safety related. Um, and quite frankly, it, I think that we felt as a whole, it was an affordable 299,000 was a reasonable and affordable amount. Not to say that these aren't just as important in many ways, and in our discussions, um, you know, it was thought that if at all possible, that these projects could be covered with any surplus money. So it's certainly appropriate for us to be looking at what these projects were, um, because that all along has been at least one of the considerations that even though this wasn't able to make it into, um, next year's proposed capital, that we would have an opportunity to use surplus money to cover some of these projects. If you look at the projects themselves, we talked a lot last week about the, um, locker room air conditioning. Um, that is the one part of the building, the, the, the whole, um, swath from the locker rooms through the coach's office, through the trainer's room. from the locker rooms through the coaches' office, through the trainers' room. Those are, right now, the only un-air-conditioned or non-air-conditioned rooms in the facility. The landscape architect, I think we talked about briefly. My suggestion is that when the Facility Subcommittee meet again, they, they really probably should reconsider this. This is 15,000 to engineer the, the main entrance to the building, but that would lead to a very expensive process if you're going to do that. And, and I'm not sure, quite frankly, our current security plan necessarily calls for that. The gym painting of the walls would be nice, but it, it, again, is not a, a critical job that needs to get done right now. We talked about the floors last week in the kitchen serving areas, and they are far past their prime, and certainly something that, that will need to get done. If not this year, then certainly in one of the upcoming years. So, you know, I think the Facility Subcommittee was right to make the decisions they made. And of these items that didn't make it into our proposed budget, certainly the air conditioning in the locker room area and the kitchen floors would be the, the two that are probably most necessary, and certainly the ones that come with the highest price tag. So, I'm going to kind of give you a few scenarios for, for how this money may be used. And I think that's when our discussion really needs to begin. The, the air conditioning, you'll see the price is a little different here. It's 210 and, and it was 195 originally when we budgeted it, and 15,000 for the engineering fees. Once, once again, COVID has impacted some of our costs. Mike Schleyhofer has been kept, been keeping in close contact with our vendors and was, this past week, suggested that he increase those prices to reflect current, the in-current increase in costs due to, due to COVID. So, one option would be to use part of that surplus money to cover the, the air conditioning and use the money left over, the 78,959, as an offset credit to the towns. The air conditioning is, it, it is, I think, a health and safety. I think it was discussed last week that there are some health and safety attributes to it. Certainly, as we've gone to really a 12-month athletic program, the locker rooms get used throughout the year. And, and really, it can become a, a health and safety issue, certainly during the summer, the spring, and the early fall months. It is a job that will need to get done. If we don't fund it with surplus from this year's budget, it will be a job that will have to be considered either in budgeting for it in future capital projects or, or using surplus money at some other point down the line. I think one of the challenges that we, we, we are going to be finding is that some of the jobs that are, are out there that are coming up in the next few years are going to be expensive jobs, whether they be boilers, or chillers, or the roof. Certainly, some of that will likely need to be talking about bonding. But, you know, I, I do think we have to be at least cognizant of the fact that whatever we don't fund now, we run the risk of fairly expensive projects piling up on one another. A second scenario would be to use all of the surplus funds and complete the air conditioning job. And although we wouldn't be able to, we would not have all of the funding necessary from surplus to complete the kitchen floors, we would use the remaining 299,000 left over after the air conditioning to at least start a capital fund that would allow us to complete that job at a relatively soon point down the road. And again, I think these are the two most important pieces of the capital funds that are, we're currently not in, in any funding cycle. Scenario three would be to, to, to put all the money back into the towns. And I know this was part of the discussion last week as well. Just, you know, one thing I would, would throw out, that I know there was some discussion that if we, if we do give all of the surplus funds back to the towns to offset the budget, I think that, the, the reason to choose that is because you feel it's the right thing to do. I know there was some talk about we may be able to have a more favorable stance for the towns in using the $1.5 million savings we'll experience next year through the principal and interest reductions. And I think that's a very generous offer. My, my only concern there is that it's difficult to predict where we're going to be a year from now. Certainly, a year ago, it would have been almost impossible to predict that we'd be in the current situation we're in. And I'm not sure if, if anyone can really make that promise. No fault of their own, just that things change each year. And whether, you know, if we do choose to use all the money to offset the budget, I think we should be doing it because it's the right way to, it's the right thing to do. Not necessarily because we anticipate we'll be able to spend all that money next year, because again, we, we, we really can't predict where we're going to be at this time next year. So, you know, I would say the, the, the three, the, the three scenarios I, I would encourage the discussion focused around would be to cover one of the projects, the air conditioning, and use the rest to offset the levy for the towns. The reason why I'm putting the air conditioner here and not the floors is that we will be continuing our service of food to the community over the summer. And so, it's unlikely that we, we would have the time to complete that project, where this is a project we would be able to complete. Or, again, use it all towards those two projects, or return all of the money to the towns to offset their budget. I'm going to throw, and, and really, I'll, I'm going to briefly talk about this, because this is, is, if you choose scenario one or two, this, this really has no bearing. If you chose scenario three and give the money back, all I'm trying to show here is that in the first column, or the second column, you'll see the current capital budget proposal. 299,000, that's still in the budget. If we do end up giving the money back, I just wanted to show that there may be some other options to get some of these projects done. And in the third column, the, the red column, what I would propose is that we use current funding, as Eva indicated earlier, because of COVID, we do have money to use this year that we haven't had in the past. It's quite another unusual year in that respect. To use some of that money to cover and pay for some of the items that are currently in our capital fund. And then, I would suggest we shift the locker room air conditioning into our capital fund, and you'll see that the, the amount of money stays about the same. But again, this is only viable if, if option three is chosen. I think that the, you know, the, the part of the discussion really needs to be, do we use some of our funds to cover some capital and, and give some back to the town to support the levies? Do we use all of the capital to support projects which are viable and, and projects that really are, are going to need to get done? If we don't do it now, we're going to be using budgeted money at some point in the near future to cover. Or do we return the monies to the town to offset their levy at this point? And if you choose that, then there are some other options we can look at to try to get some of those other projects done. So, Stephanie, I think I'll, I'll leave it at that and then open it up to discussion.
Okay, um, I think what I'd like to do is go down through the list so people can ask questions and make comments so nobody feels like they, they have lost time or they have to compete with each other. So, I'm going to use the, the same list that I've used all evening. And I can certainly go back through the list again if someone thought of something else they want to add. So, Judy, do you want to start?
I, I can, but I think I saw a couple of hands raised.
Okay.
Maybe they can go first.
Well, okay. I'll go down to the next person. Sue, I know I saw your hand raised.
Yes, I do have a few questions. The engineering fees, the H, AHU, what, what is that about, Scott? For 16,000?
That, that's the engineering fees that will be necessary to complete before they can do the installation of the actual air conditioning project.
So, so those two projects have to go together?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Um, that's what I thought. Um, all right, let me just go through. I was making notes while you were. So, the, the extra money that we have right now, which doesn't mean we'll have it at the end of the year, we, we cannot use that money for any of these projects right now, correct?
For any of the capital projects?
Correct.
We, we can, if the board, the board would have to authorize a transfer to allow that to happen.
So, the community doesn't have to vote on capital projects? No?
No, the board has the ability to do a transfer with our current funds. Once it goes into, if, if we don't expend it at the, by the end of this year, then it goes into the capital nonrecurring fund. But while it's still, while this money is still in your budget, the, the board can authorize transfers, just like we did with the fire doors and the, and the fire dampers.
What, what has the towns been saying? Have you, has anyone personally reached out to you about returning the funds to the towns? What have you heard?
Um, I would say that, that Marlborough has been very vocal with requesting that all of the 1% surplus funds be returned to the towns. Andover has, at least, at least one of the representatives from Andover has expressed that. I haven't heard from, from many folks from Andover, but I know at least one has that, that money be returned as well. You know, and, and I know that there are representatives from Hebron, and, and someone, correct me if I'm, if I'm not representing this accurately, but I think, you know, Hebron is in a little different position in that their levies are going down anyway, although they are supporting anything the Ram Board can do to support Andover and Marlborough at this point. Although, I think the overall message from Hebron we're getting is that they'll be supportive of whatever the board ends up doing. But they certainly would be supportive of the board supporting Andover and Marlborough at this point.
I don't want to speak at an inappropriate time, so Stephanie and Sue both tell me. I went to the Board of Finance meeting, and I, I have some to add about Marlborough if this is an appropriate time.
Go ahead, Judy.
Okay, um, at the Marlborough meeting, I have to say, the Board of Finance meeting, several of us went, and I was really heartened. I was very impressed. The Marlborough members, and all of them, both sides of the aisle, were really respectful of Ram and appreciative of the work that's been done with capital. Some of the most typically thought of as maybe conservative members actually pointed out, yes, it's an aging building. There wouldn't have needed to be these kinds of expenditures early. And we know that, that money will need to be spent on capital. I mean, there was full acknowledgement, and I think support, and they thanked Ram for the budgets that they have done through the years. I was, I mean, Marlborough's always a very classy, gracious town, but it was, it was, it was very impressive. What, what we finally did ask is that the projects, and I know Mary could speak to this as well, the projects that were on the safety list, that yes, they needed to occur, but we asked if the other projects, we know they need to occur, but do they need to occur this year? And so, that was asked of our superintendent, and he said that they did not need to occur this year. That would, it, it would be something soon that would have to happen. But overall, I, I really think the appreciativeness, Marlborough has been listening. And I communicated some with Joe and said this. In my opinion, the Facilities Committee and all of us as a board have done a really nice job educating the community, because if you heard that meeting, they are definitely supporters of capital. They are just asking for this one year for there to be a pause in that spending and to go back, because the debt burden will shift because of things coming due. And, and that's, that's their request. And I think, for me, their graciousness made me want to honor what, what they asked. I mean, if they were bullying us or yelling at us, I, I don't know. You know, I should always be listening to information and the message, but they were very, very clear. And so much so that Greg Lowry, who I don't even really know, but said that he's had some meetings, and Scott and Stephanie, you could speak to this, and that, yes, he can't guarantee it, but he would be happy to really work with the other communities to try to fund capital in an ongoing, very meaningful, significant way. And then, the board actually addressed, well, but the taxpayers still need to support it. And they talked about really trying to communicate better with the town in emulating something that Portland did as a town, and really communicating the capital needs, you know, to, to be supportive. So, Sue, only because you asked what the towns were saying, that was a lot of additional information I, I didn't know before the Board of Finance meeting.
I, I know, I appreciate that piece of information. So, one last question or just confirmation. We could use the money we have in our budget today to pay for these high priority items that are on this piece of paper, the unfunded 21, 22 capital improvement projects, that slide. We, we could do that with a motion, a second, and majority. Yes, okay.
Yep.
Those, those are all my questions right now. Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay, Mary?
Sorry about that. Um, I actually do, Scott, would you be able to talk about scenario for a little more in depth? I guess what I'm interested in knowing is shifting what we have budgeted right now for capital expenditures for next year? It looks like you're taking all of them out and transferring them to something else. Is that correct?
Yeah, here's, here's, here's my thinking on this. Let me make it bigger. Is that if we, any projects that we embark upon with this year's money must be encumbered by June 30th. So, we, we can only embark upon projects that are going to have a relatively near-term completion. So, for example, we couldn't just simply say, you know, we're, we're, we're going to give all the money back, we're not going to use, and we're just going to buy the air conditioning out of this year's funding. We couldn't do that because that's a job that is likely not going to be completed for sometime long after July 1st. And, and it may even not be until next spring sometime. So, you can't just simply say, we're going to fund, you know, we have a capital project we'd like to fund, and therefore, we're going to put the money towards it. It, it has to be a project that is going to be completeable by, you know, or, or encumbered by June 1st, or, I'm sorry, June 30th. So, what this particular slide demonstrates, shows is that I've cherry picked those projects that we know we can have completed in time to, so we can use this year's money. What you see in the, in the blue, the last column, and in particular, What you see in the, um, in the blue, the last column, um, and in particular, the air conditioning for the head end room and the air conditioning for the locker rooms. Those are two longer term projects that would not be done by, um, the June 30th deadline, uh, deadline. So hence moving, you know, pulling some of those projects up at the top. The gym floor protectant down through the sidewalk, moving those over into this year's funds. So that we make way for the two items at the bottom, the air conditioning and the locker rooms.
Okay. So was this sort of what Sue was referring to with the transfers?
Right. Yeah. Right. Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Essentially what we're, we're doing here is rather than having this money as surplus funds and having this discussion next year, we're, we're, we're kind of utilizing it now.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Jean?
Hi, I unfortunately wasn't able to make it to the Marlboro Board of Finance, um, meeting. Um, but I, I'd like to ask maybe those who were there, if this is allowed to say, was there any other reason beyond the expert, the bond issue? Uh, it seems to me the grand list has climbed 1.89% in Marlboro. Uh, we put in big box stores like Big Y. And so it seems like the budget for, um, Marlboro must be fairly healthy. Was there another reason? Um, that besides the bond issue, which seems, you know, pragmatic, but not pressing?
Jean, one of the other, uh, one of the other factors that, um, the representatives from Marlboros do reference is the, um, percentage of the population percentage has shifted a bit. So Marlboro this year, um, right now with our current levies would see an increase of a, uh, just north of $700,000 in their, their levy for Ram. Um, Hebron, on the other hand, sees a decrease in the levy due to the population shift. So it, it wasn't just the spending, but it was also that, that was a factor that's been mentioned.
But it's not, not related to the grand list climbing. I mean, as your population grows, you have more people. And now they're talking in here in our town about a, a 90 something apartment, which is going to further. So are we robbing Peter to pay Paul as we, I see Rob is shaking his head. You want growth, but when you get growth, you want to collapse the revenues and squeeze it out of the corners of your, of what's bringing people here. People are coming here because Marlboro frankly, has always had really stellar elementary schools. Mary, well, thank you. And, um, and, and so I'm, I'm always perplexed by this rather conservative attitude in Marlboro about we have lots of money coming in, squeeze it out and, and make sure we don't increase, you know, our revenue spending, which is what's bringing people in. It's an equation I never really, Judy, I'm talking. I've never really understood. And the other question I have is, and I think you answered this, Scott, do, and you said, we, do we have time to embark on all of the number four orange column in scenario number four?
Yes, right.
So, so that's a sort of, um, pragmatic thing. Um, and the other thing was for the people who were at the Board of Finance, what do they consider the safety projects? Was the, um, air conditioning in that list? What was in that list of the safety things that they would fund?
Well, we didn't get down to that level with the, with the Board of Finance, Jean. So we, we, we didn't really discuss any individual items. It was more the, kind of the larger context of things. So we didn't get down with the Marlboro Board of Finance and discuss which items anyone felt should or shouldn't be in.
But that was part of their discussion, but they didn't quite define it or it wasn't defined at the meeting.
Stephanie, may I ask a question? Um, can you hold off for a second until Jean's done? And, um, I'd, I'd like to go through the list and then come back, Judy, if that's okay.
That, that is okay, but she did ask about the Marlboro board meeting and I really believe that she's characterizing the board wrong. They were not, you know, crazy conservatives. They were very, very supportive of Ram. And I would be negligent if I didn't say that they were very supportive of you, Stephanie, of Superintendent Leslie. They thanked me and Mary for being there. They were very, very gracious and they never said we should not be spending this money ever.
Well, that's, that's good to hear. I, I heard something a little different from the initial presentation of that meeting. So that's, that's good to know. Thank you, Judy.
Yeah. And, and I would encourage Jean that they were, um, you know, they were reflective of the capital, kind of the, the change in focus towards capital spending of the board and were very complimentary of that. And, and we really didn't get into any specific project details in terms of you should be doing this or you shouldn't be doing that. That really wasn't where they were coming from. They were, you know, really looking at the bigger picture.
Uh, those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Lori?
Thank you. Uh, I have a couple of questions. The first is just a general one, Scott, just so I can be even clearer for my understanding. Does the 1% have to be earmarked for special projects as spent by June 30th? Or, or did I hear that wrong?
No, the 1% does not because it is surplus. So that goes into the capital, you know, the, the, the capital non-recurring fund. So it, it, that does not have to be spent or, um, by the June 30th. Only the funds in our current 20, 21 budget would need to be expended. Um,
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's what I thought, but I got a little, um,
Right.
Try to follow all the convos. Got a little, got a little confusing. So, okay. Uh, timeline questions. If scenario one or two were to be chosen, when would you envision the AC project being completed?
Um, AC project, I think, and I'll let Mike slay off or correct me if I'm wrong here, but it likely wouldn't be done until sometime next spring. Um, mostly because of the workload of the, um, vendors who are likely going to be bidding and the availability of equipment.
So next spring while the students are in session or like next spring after school's out in June?
You know, we, and Mike would have to coordinate that with the vendors. Depends on how long of a, of a, of a job that is. It might be something they do during the, um, April break. It may be something they do, you know, right at the end of June.
Okay.
So, so if I could just jump in for a second, this is a project that would need to go out to bid. Most vendors already have their spring and summer work lined up from the bidding process. So that's why it would need to wait till next spring. But all those timelines and dates would have to be coordinated. And again, it would need to be finished, um, before June 30th.
It wouldn't need to be finished before June 30th, if, if this were the 1%.
Not of this year. The 1% would be of the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
Right. Um, and so if scenario four were chosen, is it safe to say then that there's no difference in when that AC unit would be? Or would there be a difference?
No.
Would be looking at timeframe then?
Because what I, what we, what, i- in scenario four, the AC unit gets moved into next year's capital. And so it becomes 2021, 22 fiscal year. So we would have plenty of time to, to get that done anytime next year.
Right. I'm just trying to like, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to sort of weigh the options of where the money comes to do the project and the benefit is depending on where it comes from. So if, if we chose scenario one or two, and it's likely not able to happen until spring of 2022. If we chose scenario four, is the AC unit looking for that same spring of 2022 time?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't change. Right.
Okay. So, so choosing the various scenarios doesn't get us the unit any sooner for the students?
No, it makes no difference. You're correct. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's, that's really what I wanted to try to understand. So thank you. I don't have any other questions at, at the moment.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Kathleen?
I want to be sure that we don't, uh, just reiterating what Judy said. I don't think there's any personal attacks against any board per se. Um, each board is, you know, brought together for a specific, you know, position within their community to do what the community needs. And often we may disagree, but that doesn't mean that we can't agree about supporting Ram and what the schools need. Um, I'm just looking back at my notes. I just want to be sure from last week, um, Scott, I have in my notes about, um, deciding about the kitchen floor. And right now you're suggesting not to do that this year, but potentially doing it year, next year. And if so, do we have funds already budgeted for that? And, and I don't have the budget book wide open to find that. So I didn't know if that was, we would have to put that in.
That has to go in. So right now the kitchen floor is in the long-term capital plan, but it has not, it has no funding attached to it. So it would either need to go into, say, um, scenario two in which, um, you know, we, we spend all the money and include the floor and the air conditioning units. Um, and that would be completed sometime next year. Or it's going to have to wait and be placed in another year's capital funds or, you know, be, be funded some other way. So no, right now the, the floor is a project, but it's not a project that has any funding attached to it at this point.
If it went in our budget, then that would change the percentage, um, that is already. Would it be a huge change in our percentage?
Yeah, it would. You're talking Eva, what would, that would probably be like one and a half percent?
Definitely increased because it's over a 90,000, close to 100,000. So, um, I, I'd have to do the math on, it's a little too tired to do math at nine o'clock this evening. So we can get back to you on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Cause then there's a concern that people want the percentage to go down. And then we're, I think the Peter and Paul reference has already been used, but you know, I don't, we've already kind of gone through the budget and I wouldn't want to have to take something out that we've agreed that students need, um, in order for the kitchen floors to be done. And I know the kitchen floors need to be done. I think you've said that. I know it's been said in past years. Um, I, you know, I just don't want to keep pushing that off until something really goes wrong. Or somebody trips and falls on something that's loose and then we have a bigger issue. Um, okay. I, that's all of my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Rob?
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll try and be brief. Um, I got a couple, couple of questions for Ava. So I know at the beginning you said our surplus so far for this year is about 650,000.
Correct.
So where do we get the 200,000 to pay for the fire?
So, so all that, the whole budget transfer that was approved at this night's meeting, the majority of it was from athletics and from some savings in the facilities budget that, um, did not come to fruition and or savings, um, because of COVID and other items.
So it didn't come off that 650?
Oh, it does come off the 650. So yeah, the 200, yes. So that'll, that'll bring you down to four something.
Now, what about the 150,000? We're in the hole for the foods. Where are we forecasting that?
So, so we're, we're slowly working on that. So that's already factored in. When I give you the number, I've already factored in the monthly outcomes for that.
So we're looking at right around 450,000 right now?
Correct.
Okay. You know, my only concern with spending that down is that's next year's surplus. That's our safety net for next year in case we have to incur extra COVID costs, extra school plus costs. Um, I'm not sure if we were over budget with our budget last year and we, next year, and we had no surplus. I would not want to go back to the towns for more money. So me personally, I would like to keep that money, um, almost as a kitty for next year. I know I said last meeting, I was in favor of spending all of the surplus for this year. Um, I believe in compromise. I think my personal opinion, we do option one, we do the AC and then we return the rest of the money to the towns. I think it's fair. Um, just me personally, but that's the way I would lean.
Okay, Vin?
Um, yeah, I'll try to keep it brief too. Um, I think, you know, we're, we're using some of this athletic savings, um, to, to pay for the fire doors and stuff that the, that the school and the towns would be, have to be paying for. So, um, uh, you know, as a benefit to athletics, I'd like to see that air conditioning get finished. Um, you know, way back when there was a lot of stuff that was cut from the school to, to get it finished. Um, and, 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 and I didn't go to any of those meetings, but I, I heard that they were pretty, uh, rough. Um, so yeah, there was a lot of stuff cut. Um, and, uh, and, and now, you know, the kids have been, you know, having to pay for that over these years. Um, and, and also, you know, Hebron, you know, when my kids were young and weren't going to Ram, uh, we were paying the lion's share of the levy. Um, and I didn't, uh, I didn't attend many meetings, but I don't think many people were, were advising, uh, you know, for any breaks for Hebron. Um, and, and I do understand that the time that we're in, and I agree with Rob, I think that the thing to do, I mean, me personally, I would do the, I would just do the AC unit purchase and, and do the engineering fee. Uh, if we can out of this year's funds, uh, take the 16,000 and, and encumber that before June 30th, uh, possibly. Um, I don't know if that would be possible, or we just wait to, uh, to take it out next year. I know we have monies left over from the school sign that we haven't used. So there's, there's some other resources that we could pull for that, uh, for that engineering. Um, and then give around 100,000 back to, uh, to towns in addition to the 448. So now you're talking, you know, 550,000 plus going back to the towns, which, which again, I think is a good compromise.
So to answer Vinnie's question, you can't take the 16,000 out of this year for next year's project?
Say, say that again, please.
So the 16,000 for engineering fees could not come out of the surplus of this year's. So if it was after audit, you can do it. Pre-audit, you cannot do it. You, it has to end on June 30th. So the 16,000 could not be encumbered for next year's expense.
But it, it could come out post audit.
Post audit, once it's deemed as a surplus, yes, it can be.
And, and can you just verify Eva? Because I heard in the beginning of the meeting that the, um, that the, the Woodson's loss was not included in those numbers. And now you told Rob that it is included in those numbers.
So it's, it's not in the food service area. It's in the operating budget of the net projection. So it is included in my net favorable projection. It is not included in the food service portion of the $68,000 that was left that is available.
So Eva, I was, I guess I misunderstood that as well. Could you just finish that when Vinnie's talking so that we're all clear on that? So, so it was factored into the big total final number that you gave us?
Correct.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to, um, Jess?
I can't say that I have any questions, but, um, I appreciate, uh, everyone's thoughtfulness as we're kind of going through this and, and trying to, to filter some of this out. Um, I, I, I definitely tend to lean towards what Rob is saying is kind of finding that compromise, uh, between definitely a, a very immediate need with, uh, the AC and then also trying to support the towns and the positions at their end. I do have one question because I can't remember right now. Um, for the, for the AC, what was the timeframe for that to happen? Again, was that over the summer?
Well, it, it could possibly happen over this. It was probably more likely that based upon the bidding process and the availability of materials and the time of the vendors, it would more likely be happening, um, next spring.
Okay. Thanks. I couldn't, couldn't remember.
If, if they, you know, if the planets aligned and, and we had the right vendor and was able to get the materials, there's nothing to stop it from certainly happening over the summer.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, that was, that was it. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, Joe?
Uh, sure. Uh, I, I picked up on what Vinnie said as well. I, I'm, I'm just concerned, well, with the 137,000, my notes are that when I asked the question about the food service, I'd just like to know how you're calculating that if it's a $137,000 loss, how are you carrying that number, not in a monthly how are you carrying that number not in a monthly report? Why come we're not seeing that?
It's, the operating is covering the loss for the food service. So it's in-cumbered or engrossed in the full net projection, bigger item dollar report that I reported on, not in the food service portion of it, because I'm covering the loss through the operating.
How do you do that? I mean, we're supposed to be seeing reports for food, food service and that's supposed to should be in that report.
Because I'm reporting it to you on a monthly basis, so I'm talking about it and explaining it to you. And I, explaining that the bills are coming from the operating budget.
So I'll ask you another question then. Can, can this, can this loss that you're forecasting be higher than what you're forecasting?
No, because I'm working with the vendor who's projecting out the loss on our behalf.
Okay. I, I really think that that should be, we need to see that. I, I don't, you're telling us. I, I appreciate that, number one. But this is a transaction that should be transparent to the board. I, I, unless I'm misspoken, I, I mean, I, I don't see that. It, that's if, you know, I, I kind of look at these numbers every, every very closely on a month a basis. And if I'm looking at a food service loss of, you know, what is, what is going to be our total food loss? You're saying it's a hundred and thirty seven or is it going, is it already more than that?
It's going to be a hundred and thirty seven thousand is the figure that I have from the last that I will be projecting out for you again for next meeting. I will find a different way to try to reflect the food service report. That's just a report that I've inherited and it's my understanding that's how you guys like it. So I will try to find a better way to project that out for you.
I really appreciate that because that food service, if, if that's something you're, you know, it never really made sense to me, number one, because we seem to carry that as a totally different, it's almost like a capital fund, right? In essence, uh, but it comes out of operating, but it's really, because you guys do a lot of different things. You, you give money back to the vendor to buy equipment and we actually pay for that equipment and, and it's.
Yeah, so, so in essence, the way that the bid goes out for the vendors is that there's an investment portion. The investment means that that's money that's put into the program to invest into the program. That is a loan on our behalf that the vendor will purchase the stuff. So when the cafeterias or tables were purchased in the past, that was a loan that needed to be paid back to the vendor on the purch, uh, for our purchase. So it comes out of their pocket. We have to pay it back. Um, so we have the potential to buy fifteen thousand dollars a year on their dime, but we have to reimburse them for that. So it's amortized over the life of their contract.
Okay, this is probably another time, another just time for discussion on this, but, uh, so I'll move on with that. So, um, so you've already talked about the fire doors coming off of the six fifty two. So we're down to four fifty. We already talked, it was pointed out that we've already taken a fifteen thousand dollar increase on the cost of the HVAC. Um, and I, and we can all know why, because the price of materials has gone skyrocket. So that's only going to continue. So, um, I, I, you know, I think we should be looking at that project at, at a more uh, realistic timeframe. Um, the, Mr. Leslie has pointed out that there's no guarantee. Um, you know, initially there was a lot of discussion between the three towns. As I mentioned last week, you know, uh, they, they wanted all of the surplus money plus our capital money. And now it seems like that's kind of gone away and now we're back to just all of the surplus money. I still don't have a good understanding of why is the urgency? And I think Jean asked this question when we look at, um, you know, Hebron has got a, a, a pretty healthy, um, unfinds, unassigned, uh, fund balance. Marlboro has a pretty healthy, um, unassigned fund balance of seven hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. They're quoted in the paper by the first selectmen of having a, you know, a, a, a pretty solid and healthy financial report, uh, right now. Um, Andover, I don't think is in that category. But, you know, I, I just don't have a good understanding of, and, and I want to have a compromise as well. And I think Rob's idea, uh, is to wrap it up is probably the right one. But again, I don't understand when you look at how much money we've returned for the, for the towns over a period of ten years and prior to that, the history, because I think Judy and I are the longest tenure, tenure members of this board, there was no capital ever put in. And as Mr. Leslie articulated, um, you know, we've, we've had to put it into maintenance. And the first thing that some of the board, previous boards have done was cut that maintenance out. And that's kind of how we got into this situation. And I, I, I'm very concerned uh, as a, as a board member and a taxpayer, if you, if we're going to continue to go down this road of Robin Peter to pay Paul, as everybody's already articulated, it's, it's a, it's a slippery slope. So, you know, we've, we, we, we saw what's, what's happening with unanticipated expenses, fire doors, they pop up. What's the next surprise that we're going to have in this school? And we've had a lot of surprises. Uh, everybody knows that. Uh, so, um, you know, we, we're, that's why I asked those questions about the inspections. What are we doing? When is the next one going to throw us a curve ball and say, okay, well now, you know, go back to the ADA projects? Um, you know, a state official came in and said, you have to, I don't know, Scott, help me out. What was the mess? Six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars of ADA?
Yep. Yep. And that was that, tho- those projects were chosen on a kind of a lottery basis, you know? We, we do handful of schools a year and we, we happened to be chosen and yeah, yeah, it was at least seven hundred thousand, Joe.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I, I hear the towns. I've said that before. Um, I think there's compromise here. Um, you know, we, we have the need and, you know, we've, we've done a, I think of an exceptional job of showing towns how we are very transparent with their money, uh, the need for their money, um, in executing these, these projects. And I think, you know, our facilities has done a great job and our business manager has done a great job of, you know, ke- keeping, you know, keeping the money, you know, under control and also coming in under budget. So I, I, I think that's a, that's a valuable tool that we have. So, um, I, I, again, I'm missing the, I'm missing the pieces why with all these towns running surpluses other than Andover, what's the urgency this year? And there's, again, there's no guarantee for the, the, the false promise that I'll, that has been put out there that we're, our debt service goes down a million and a half dollars. And, um, you know, if, if we decide that we're going to spend a, a million and a half and bond a million dollars, a million and a half dollars for a synthetic turf field, are we going to get that support? So, um, uh, those are my comments and, um, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I was at the meeting, um, with the Board of Finance with Marlboro and, I mean, there, there are just so many sides to this. Um, yes, they are asking us to give us the money back this one year in support of us digging into the possible, you know, the, the one point five million. Next year possibly spending more on capital that year. They support that. But I pointed out in the meeting, you know, it's, it's not the, it's not the Board of Selectmen or finance that are passing the budgets, it's the voters. And, um, they had very reassuring words that, that, um, they would do everything in their power to support, you know, extra expenditures from that one point five mil, but, um, you know, so they, but, but still it's, it's, it's not a promise they, they can keep that, that they can do everything they can do to convince voters that, that that's a good idea, but, but that might, there's no guarantee that's going to happen. Um, I can, I mean, I do feel for, um, Andover. And, um, I am a little curious as to, as to why Marlboro is pushing so hard because, you know, knowing that they have a healthy budget. You know, I, I understand, I, I admire how the three towns are supporting each other right now and would like to support that by giving back the money to, because I see the three towns working together and supporting each other. And that's, that's a great thing to see. However, we do have capital that we have to spend, I mean, that we need to, 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 um, to fix. And, um, on the other hand, I know I'm babbling, but I, scenario number four is very alluring. But to, if we didn't have the fire doors, then I think that would be a clear choice. But I, I, but with the fire door problem, we're really spending that current surplus down to about two hundred, what, two, about two hundred fifty, two hundred twenty five thousand dollars. And to me, that, that is frightening. I think we need to, to make sure we have, um, something in case something comes up like, like Joe had mentioned. Um, you know, it's, a, a twenty-year-old building is a scary thing. It's, it's with, with nothing have, have been done. Um, you know, up to a few years ago. So, um, so many sides to this. Um, that it's, it's, um, you know, it's very difficult to weigh out what to do. I mean, compromise, I think, is ultimately the, the, the best thing since there are so many sides. So I'm going to stop babbling and, um, go back to Judy. And we can, we can take another round, but I do want to be cognizant of the time. It's now nine fourteen. We still have an executive session. So, um, we can, we can make another round, um, but I, I ask you to, to try to be brief and, and we'll, um, try to, try to get to a conclusion.
Sorry.
Second, it's Judy. Just, can I just add one piece to, just to follow up on what you said? Um, in terms of the, the fire doors, again, just to put some context around this. If, if we, if, if you didn't, if we didn't vote to use this year's funds to cover the fire doors, I imagine we would be asking that we use surplus money to cover that two hundred thousand or the almost two hundred thousand dollars for the fire doors. You know, so in essence, you know, we, we have pulled what should have by all rights been a significant project that was made for your surplus. And, you know, so I, I, I think that I understand the towns, what they're asking for. And I, I completely, and I'm sympathetic to that, but at the same time, I think they're, I think the, you showed this evening that you're also very responsible in trying to minimize some of those additional costs by taking care of, of things right now when we have the ability to do that. So I just throw that out there that, you know, this, I think we've, we've pulled almost two hundred thousand out of what probably in a normal year would have been thrown into the surplus, um, spending. And instead we're taking care of it with, you know, our current funds. I'm sorry, Judy.
I'm sorry. I said I'd go last, but I forgot some of what I was going to say by going last. But in any case, um, I, I really appreciated Rob's questions. I had those written down. I would say that, um, the one thing I, I would say kind of, kind of to his comments is I think that we as a board are, uh, uh, I'm impressed with what every single person has said and everybody's taking this seriously. And I would be so very comfortable if we ever had to go back to the towns because we are listening to them. And I mean, the fire doors, we, we don't have a choice really on, on that kind of thing. So we are being, I think, very responsible. To Lori's point, um, the, I, I would go with scenario four because the air conditioning probably would not happen um, until the next year anyway. The other thing that, that we could, could do is wait until the end of the year. And, um, if we have that surplus money, then you'd know better Eva in, say, late April, um, or May, is we could vote that money, we could do the line item transfers and handle it with capital. And the last thing that I think I'll say, because I forgot one of the other things, but is I really agree. The facilities, um, you know, you did a phenomenal job educating all of the towns. And I do think if we went back to them, they would be incredibly supportive. I mean, it, they were like almost reading from the talking points we created and we talked about communication and things. So, you know, regardless of which way this goes, that should be heartening to everybody or everybody should feel good about that, that the towns really do understand that they really pointed out two huge things. It's an aging building and that cost were cut upfront that shouldn't have been cut. So I do think there's that respect and hopefully we wouldn't need to go back. But I, I, I wouldn't even hesitate. I would not be one bit afraid to go back.
Okay, Sue?
I have nothing more. Thank you.
Okay, Mary?
Um, I just have a couple of questions. Um, I, I'm kind of now trying to, um, sort this out in my head about the food service. So Eva, let me know if I'm, if I'm thinking about this correctly. The report you give us on the food service program are hard numbers, correct?
So that report encompasses your sales, your revenues and expenditures that come out of the food service account. So that.
So those are.
Yeah, that matches, that matches the bank balance. So that, that dollars to dollars, it matches what's in the bank or as what has left the bank or gone through the bank.
Okay, and your the projection sheet, because they are projections. They're not.
Correct.
We, right, we can't count on those numbers. Okay. And you had alluded to the fact that you thought, and I'm not sure in your projection how you would take this into account yet, but with the kids coming back in person full-time, uh, have you made any adjust, are those adjustments already made in your projection?
So at this point in time, no, that's why this is done on a monthly basis, because anything new is brought in. So Whitsons did their best to help me calculate what the expenditures from their budgetary purposes would be with their labor. Although they're adding two new people to labor. Any meals that we're going to get reimbursed for and the increase of sales to staff members, that all gets put into a profit and loss sheet for them that they provide to me. So at the last point, the hundred and thirty seven was a good number.
Okay, but that obviously doesn't take into account that we're going to have our full building again. Correct. Okay. So hopefully that number will improve, right?
That's what I'm hoping for, but worst case scenario, we're looking at a, a big chunk of change.
Okay, all right. Um, the second question I had was in scenario four, it looks like that we're not spending our entire, um, you're not taking the entire, I don't know what you call it at the end, unused funds or whatever, not the surplus, but the, the funds we have not spent?
Correct. So, so in theory, as every month goes on, any encumbered purchase order that may be coming under or someone forgot to close will, will release. So there might be additional funds that will be available. There might be less funds that'll be available because something might come in higher or was unexpected. So again, the net projection is just that. It's just my ability to go through the budget line by line and figuring out what I know at that time as we're doing this that is available. So I know now that magnet school tuitions have all been paid. So all of that money has freed up. I know summer school for last summer school, it's because our summer school was in July, that was all free. So there are items that I know I'm in constant contact and discussion with pupil services to know the ins and outs, the ups and downs of each IEP that is happening. I work very closely with IT and the facilities director to make sure that I have a good handle on what might be happening. Do surprises happen? Yes. Is it my best educated guess? Yes. Um, there is no science to this. Um, you just do your best and, and keep in constant communication and talking to people and making sure that I, I know what's happening. Do I growl a lot? Yes. But, um, we make sure that we are in constant communication so that we know what's happening. Um, that's how I develop the net projection. I go line by line. So I know that if there's a staff member that should be paid, why is that money still there? If the money is there, why is that, why, why is it there? So I, I, I'm constantly talking to everybody. I'm the one person who has their hand in everybody's business because in, in theory, it's, it's our business and I have to report on that to you guys. Does that help answer your question? Sorry.
Mary, you're all set? Mary, you're all set? Mary, are you all set?
Sorry, I don't know when I muted. Sorry about that. Um, I just had one more, the question about the scenario for the non lapsing account spending. Um, I've heard the number about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, someone was saying that might be left at the end of the year. And it looks like in scenario four that we would be transferring two hundred and twenty four thousand nine hundred dollars, is that correct? So that would that would still leave us about half of that, right?
Correct.
Because I'm looking back at our previous, these are surplus amounts from previous years, and certainly that's in line with what we've had left over in the past.
Right.
Anywhere from fifty eight thousand, I mean, in the past five, let's say, five or six years. It looks like it's sort of in line with what we've had.
So and that is accurate. And there's also, I I'm gonna throw another monkey wrench in. So currently in state legislation, and I believe they're gonna discuss this in the educational committee on Wednesday, the seventeenth. Um, currently, regional school districts are only allowed to move forward one percent of their surplus to capital non recurring um because of an oversight in wording when all the other school districts, regular municipal school districts get to do two percent. So hopefully through this legislative process, our one percent will become a two percent um that we can carry forward to surplus. So that might throw a a monkey wrench into your discussion and planning purposes, but I'm hoping that that moves forward.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful.
Okay, Jean?
Um, just some follow up questions. First of all, I want to ask, I I'm not, uh, I don't deal with sort of estimating construction costs and the trades, so I'm hoping my fellow board members who are more knowledgeable can help us with this. But I I'm hearing a lot about um labor shortages yeah across the board in in, you know, hands on kinds of building trades and and all sorts of things and plumbing and electricity and whatever. And so I'm wondering, if we don't do this air conditioning, does anybody have an estimate, you know, an annual estimate? How much is it gonna possibly cost us in addition? It sounds like it already went up fifteen K, is am I hearing that? And what might it be uh if we put it off a year? What's that what's that gonna look like? And my second question is Judy says she she has no problem going back to the towns, and I I I don't know what that means. I I would like some clarity on what she means by going back to the towns.
Jean, I think that um in terms of answering the question, you know, what would the increase be if we held off a year? I I don't know if any of us can predict that. I think the fact that we're seeing, you know, a fairly significant fifteen thousand increase in a relatively short period of time tells us that it 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 could only get worse with with staffing shortages and the challenge of finding qualified workers, you know, you you have to assume that wages will increase. And, you know, I don't know if any of us here can make that prediction, but I I think we can all reliably predict that it will go up. How much? I I'm not sure if any of us can put a hard number to that.
Scott, you also have to think about whether or not this is a a rate job, number one, for HVAC people. Also, is it uh what's the threshold for um the higher scale? Is it dollar amount?
Prevailing wages?
Prevailing wage, yes.
I'm I'm almost positive it's a hundred thousand dollars to be a prevailing wage job.
So this this would be a prevailing wage job. So you to answer, you know, I think Jean's question, which is a good question about uh the trades and the the increase of the fifteen thousand in is one year. I mean, it, we know it's going up.
Yeah.
But but Jean's question was, why was Judy saying we could go back to the towns? I believe Judy and Judy could correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, I had two questions. That was my second question.
Mm hmm, okay. So the I, from what I understand, when Judy says we could go back to the towns, Judy could correct me if I'm wrong, I feel like she's stating if we have to, if we are sure and we need money to pay for something, we could go back to the towns and ask them because we would have been very gracious to give the money back. So if we were ever in a bind, we would be able to go back to the towns and ask for the money. I that's my assumption, Jude, of what Judy was stating stating when we could go back to the towns.
I'll I'll unmute, I'll unmute myself. Yes, yes, that's exactly right. Um, and the other thing I would say is none of us know. I my undergrads in economics and finance, if we could predict the rates of things, we'd all be billionaires on the stock market, everybody. I mean, it's reasonable to predict it could go up some, but we don't know. We we really don't.
And so I think some of the indicators are 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 pretty pretty clear there actually, Judy, in terms of where we're going. I know I don't think you can train a generation of people to get up to speed in the trades within a year. That's my concern about like funding it next year, funding it this year, and the and and the amount uh that it would cost. Um, and so that that was why I was asking that question in particular. Uh, but I appreciate your going back to the towns answer. Thank you, both of you, for answering my question.
Okay, Lori?
Uh, yeah, I I do uh have a couple of questions. Um, one, to actually piggyback off of what Jean was uh just talking about. Um, Scott, if um looking at scenario four, if the AC unit were to be put into the capital budget for twenty one, twenty two, is that something that can be acted on like come June one, when the new budget year, you know, starts? Or how how late does that have to wait? Because that piggybacks off of Jean's concern about um ability and pricing. Uh, so is that something that can go out to bid right soon, you know, in a few months? Or does it have to wait?
Um, Eva, I'm gonna add, I'm gonna defer to Eva, because I think Eva's more likely to have an accurate answer to that one. Eva, can we?
So you can go out to bid whenever you want to. So as of July first, we could go right out to bid. Unfortunately, because most of the people who would be bidding on these projects already have projects in the works, most likely, we wouldn't get a slot to be able to have the air conditioning worked on until winter. So.
But we could get, if it went out to bid, we would get a uh a price tag that would be.
Yes, correct. We would get a price tag and and most likely, they would be doing the same thing. They would anticipate knowing what they know from their suppliers and try to bid out accordingly. Um, so yes, they they would do their best to put put out a bid package for us, and then we would vote on that. Um, and we would work with that engineering firm to ensure that we have it correct. Um, I know in speaking with Michael that um the engineering firm, Ken is the gentleman's name, I don't know what firm he represents. So Ken um had stated that you really don't want to do an air conditioning project in the winter, of course, but if we can get on somebody's books right for the first in spring, I I think we would be in a good position.
Okay.
Mike Schleyhoffer, did you want to um add to that?
Yeah, uh, talking with Ken, they they're just, they're several months out as far as like even being able to start um construction documents for us for a bid packet as well. Um, I just want to throw that out as well.
Because, Mike, wouldn't the engineering need to get done first? Or they they need to consider the engineering drawings and and before anything could be put out to bid?
Correct. They would have to have to do the construction documents for the bid package.
Right. So so that's money that's 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 tied up in twenty one, twenty two fiscal year funds. So really, you wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to start that process until July first. So I think, Lori, I think, like, could we start it now? You know, could we get a a jump start on it? And the answer would be no, because we would need to use the funding for the engineering drawings to be um started so that those putting bids in know what they're bidding for.
Right, right. Yeah, a again, it's just sort of thinking where the pot of money comes from, the timeframe for starting.
Right.
Doesn't seem like we're able to start any sooner, regardless of where it comes from, based on that information, um, to try to count for maybe continued increase. Um, okay, so uh Scott, do you know when the roof and boilers need to start to be figured into the capital budget?
Um, Mike, do you know offhand what years those are? Because I I I don't, Lori, I don't have the um capital open in front of me, but I know Mike.
I I believe it's like twenty four, twenty five or twenty five, twenty six. I don't have this sheet in front of me.
So a couple of years out from next year.
Yeah, yes.
So if.
I'm saying, so so like, you know, some of the, like, the roof project millions, that's that's not a project that we're gonna be able to use surplus to cover. That's not a capital. So, you know, we're likely gonna have to look at some bonding for some of those more expensive projects. So, you know, one of the things that we'll be talking with facilities committee about is here are some scenarios for what it would look like to bond for those more expensive projects like turf, like or like the boilers, like the chillers and that sort of thing. The, you know, we can, you know, we have the benefit of the the drop in our principal interest payments. So we have the one and a half million next year, and then two years from that, we'll have another six hundred thousand drop, and then a couple of years later, we'll have another, I think, four hundred thousand drop. Um, you know, so this is when we want to start strategically thinking, you know, when would we start another bonding project? You know, that would be able to take advantage of those savings.
Right. Okay.
Judy, can you mute? Your dog's barking.
We need to keep the the discussion about about what we have on hand here.
Um, yeah, can I can I just ask, though, um, is there a guarantee in that scenario for that the AC and some of those pro those projects that were in that line, was it blue?
Mm hmm.
Is there a guarantee that those would be in the capital if we were to use that? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if, yeah, if if we if you made the motion and that's what ended up happening, then they would end up being there.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I I assuming it's the same board, correct, Scott? We have an election coming up.
Well, no, that would be decided in this year's budget. So it would go into, you know, the the bu this, the the budget that we're currently working on. So it's it's you're the board that.
Got it, okay.
The only, Lori, the only possible problem would be is if the budget fails, then, you know, then no guarantee. So if the budget didn't pass and you as a board decided you need to reduce it, then so.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, maybe you should talk about for some of the board, how the bifurcation really works. And I think you just touched on it. I think that kind of where Lori's question is, you know, why we bifurcated the budget? And, you know, that can that can be shot down by the taxpayers and also our operating budget can be shot down by the taxpayers or approved. So there's two scenarios there.
Yeah, and and, you know, when when they, when we, when we were just one, an operating budget, and there were capital items within that budget, if the budget didn't pass or there was concern that the budget may not pass, it was often the capital items got that got removed because they tend to be the most expensive and they tend to have the most impact on reducing um the overall in percentage increase of the budget. By bifurcating, by having the the town vote on a capital budget and vote separately on a operating budget, it means that we could very likely have a capital budget that passes, but the operating doesn't. And, you know, we've been very fortunate. I think the board's done a great job of putting a whole package together, and they they both have been very successful. But um, you you know, the 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 operating, you know, we we've been talking about one point eight six percent, so we talk about them as if they're one budget, but they really are two separate budgets. And we do have to, you know, sell both of those budgets to the towns of, you know, here's our capital budget and here's our um operating budget, two very different things. One can pass and or they both can pass, or one may not pass.
Okay, Kathleen? Kathleen's still there? Okay, we'll go on to Rob.
I'm good, thank you.
Ben?
Um, yeah, I'm I'm good.
Okay, Jess?
I'm good also.
Joe?
Yeah, just a couple more points uh that I forgot um the first time around. When I, when we talk about strategic planning and budgeting, again, I I I forgot this is another big one that it's looming around the corner for us, which is ADA on the on the middle school level. Um, you know, we had it in the high school level, but we know that that is someday going to come and bite us with the ADA for the middle school. So um again, those are things that we we need to have thought about uh in 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 planning and funding. Um, I also, you know, I'm concerned again about, you know, the the tight numbers of trying to whittle down to 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 zero. You know, we we've had some mistakes in in budgeting in the past years, you know, uh that have thrown us off a little bit. Um, there's not the, you know, to say that that can't happen again in this current budget. We, you know, didn't, we we didn't, we we overlooked something. Um, you know, we're down of three hundred or four hundred thousand dollars, whatever the number is gonna be. I just want people to consider that, that, you know, there is things that we got three months left, maybe three months left in this budget, um, that anything can happen. Um, and the other thing I wanted to mention is that every town in the state of Connecticut is getting COVID money. I know Hebron's getting a lot of money. I know um there's also getting money from the federal government as well. So those are things that I I I don't hear the towns talking about. Um, and again, I I think we, uh, I'll I'll use Kathleen, we're we're the board of finance. We we have a job to son us or do what's best for our our school districts and making sure what's right and safety conscientious for our kids um and our staff. So I just um, I I just throw those thoughts out to people. Again, I I I'm more of a conservative person to just try to right go up against the the barber pole and 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 try and get, you know, make all this happen for um, you know, three hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it's it's it it three hundred thousand dollars is not, it it it's it's a lot of money, but as looking at these dollar items here and some of these these expenditures, it can change very, very quickly. So, thank you.
Um, I just have a a quick one for Scott and Eva. I'd I'd really like to know how confident you are that we'll be okay if we go with scenario number four, um, whittling down the current current surplus um down to like half, like like two, two fifty, two twenty five currently? And and if you if you think that's enough and if there'll be possible additions to that?
When you say additions, Stephanie, what do you mean by that?
Well, do you do you see some other sa savings um that that will be added on to that um by the end of the year? How confident are you we're gonna be okay with with that amount if we go with scenario number four? I know I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, no.
Give me a definite answer, but but um I just I just want to get get a feel for it.
It it's a fair question. It's not a pretty way of doing it. I mean, it's unusual. It's not something that probably we would we would ever consider in a normal year because this is such an unusual year with so much unspent money. It provides us with an opportunity that we wouldn't typically have. So this isn't a a, you know, textbook case of of how do you manage your money? It's it's a kind of a, hopefully, once in a lifetime opportunity. Um, based upon all of the numbers that we have right now and the numbers that we're projecting, I'm comfortable that this that this is a reasonable um proposal.
Okay, thank you.
But Stephanie, if I can add to that, if it does help ease, you don't have to do the two twenty four, that orange column that Scott's proposing all in one foul swoop. So I mean, when April comes, if you if the board feels that it's a good time and you want to take a smaller chunk of some of that. So basically, what happens at year end is a lot of districts, what they'll do is they'll do basically in April, they'll start doing a spend down and they'll start spending down what they feel that they have. And then they'll they'll revisit it again in May and June. We're doing this preemptively to to put this in line, to have this discussion so that the board is behind the the spend down of 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 this, of these funds.
Okay.
Stephanie, just a quick question. In the facilities meeting, was
Stephanie, just a quick question. In the facilities meeting, was there any discussion brought up regarding, um, funding of the turf field for next year?
No, it was, it was about, um, we discussed, uh, the fire doors. Randy was there. And that was the, the only topic of discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Stephanie, can I make a, can I make a motion?
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't go my last time, though.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just, um, wanted to ask a question. Can we get, um, a copy? I love the sheets of prioritization that facilities has made. Can we get the most current and up to date one?
Judy, which, which one do you mean? Do you mean like the long-term plan?
Yeah, the one that has immediate, long-term. And what we did is we ranked projects. So we knew what needed to happen immediately, what had to happen pretty soon. And then like the roof or something, is that three years away, four years, five years? Just so we, we have that information.
Absolutely, yep.
And I think that would be really helpful. And, um, just before our motion is, is made. I really like scenario four, and I think having managed budgets and closed out years. I think what Eva just said is very, very wise. It, it just, it's really a, like a safety way of doing it, that the plan would be to use all of the money. But that we don't commit it exactly at, at, at this meeting.
Thank you, Judy. Sue?
I'd like to make a motion to go with scenario number four.
Is there a second?
Uh, I will second.
Discussion?
Well, I think, I think discussion is partly, do we, before we vote, does anybody want to make any kind of friendly amendment and, um, perhaps do what Eva suggested? Or should we just vote on it like this?
I have discussion if, when it's my turn.
I, I think it can be passed like it is. I, I don't know.
No, thank you. My, my, I, I need to mute anyway. I have active dogs. Thank you.
Joe?
Since we're debating it, so I think the problem with option four is, is to what Lori's point was, is that there is no guarantee with capital next year. You can put it on the agenda to get this thing done. But it may not fly. Um, that's the downfall, I think, with option four. Um, and.
I, I tend to agree with you, Joe. So my, the, the only other option that I would have voted for would be scenario three. I feel like a scenario four is a compromise, so that, that's why I went with four.
I appreciate that, Sue. You, you know, you're, you're obviously entitled to your vote and your opinion. I'm just saying that it is, is part of the discussion. It's, you know, for me, you know, I, I've, I've been in facilities for, forever, um, you know, and with my background, I mean, it's, there's no guarantee. That's what scares me. There's no guarantee what, what bring, what, what's going to come next year. We didn't anticipate a pandemic this year. Uh, we did our valiant effort of getting everything, uh, that we, you know, we, we end up cutting budget. We end up, we typically do what we typically, what is done in the past. We wanted to commit a capital of five hundred thousand dollars and to pigeonhole into a two percent or less budget, we cut capital. That's typically what goes on and is, there's no difference in what's going to go on, it looks like, for the future. Um, so that's the caution that I, 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 I see with option four. Other than that, I like it. And, uh, but I, I also would, I'll, I'll wait to my term, but that's the, on discussion. If we're gonna discuss the, each motion and take a vote, if that's how, it seems, seems like that's what we're going to be doing. Um, you know, I'll, I'm done with discussion, but.
Thank you, Joe. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, Joe, what do you mean about, um, if we put it on next year? That it might not pass the A C, you mean?
Correct, yes.
But wouldn't, in, in scenario four, isn't it still happening this year?
No.
I thought I saw it on there.
It is.
Yeah.
How, how is?
Joe, the A C has been put into this, to next year's capital budget.
In scenario four?
In scenario four.
Right, you took out, you took out items from this year's, from the capital budget for next year, paying it out of this year's surplus. That's what, that's what he was doing.
Yes, the items, the items that can be done by Jan-, by June third on our capital budget have been shifted over to, to end of year surplus. And then the A C unit has been shifted over to, has been put into the capital.
But isn't the risk that, uh, we're gambling that the surplus estimates are correct?
That's correct. That's my, that's my concern, Gene, yep.
End with what Eva just said, that if we have to cut stuff in April, we can cut from there.
Or if a boiler breaks, that, that's all up in the air. We gotta do the boiler because the boiler is going to come first. I mean, so that, that's sort of a, that's sort of like go to the, go to the casinos and gamble, uh, scenario.
Well, except we'd still have some funds still in the surplus, correct?
Yes, there'd be, there'd be about two hundred fifty thousand still in surplus. Which is.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't typically have a positive of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars at this point. You know, we're, we're, it, it's much larger. It's exaggerated because of the year we had.
Should we just call the vote, Stephanie?
Is there any other discussion? Okay, why don't we call a vote? Judy?
Yes.
Stephanie, can you restate the motion, please?
Sure, the motion is that we go with scenario number four.
And, and why is that the motion over one, two, or three, can I ask?
Was that because I made the motion? So if someone else wanted to step up and make a motion before I made a motion, anyone could make a motion. Any board member can make a motion. That's the motion I have, that's on the table. We need to finalize it. If it passes, that's what we're doing. If it fails, then someone else can make another motion.
And we could do a motion to put this off till April, or we could do lots of other motions.
You could make any motion you want, yes, yep. Okay, so Stephanie, where are we at?
We're, well, we're about to vote.
Okay.
I, I thought I voted.
Judy voted?
I vote yes. Sue? And thank, by the way, thank you for being so creative to come up with this, um, Scott and Eva. I, I do think this is a compromise. I think the projects get done and the towns get money.
I, I vote yes, Stephanie.
Mary?
Yes.
Jean?
Can I hold off for a minute? I'm still thinking.
I can come back to you. Lori?
I hate to ask you the same thing, but please.
Okay, Kathleen?
Oh, boy.
You can always hold off until it's some, if this vote goes and then you want to, if you, someone wants to make another motion, like Sue mentioned. Vote no on this motion and then you can state your other motion.
Right, but just keep in mind, you can't vote on this motion again. It's, if it fails, it's over.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make the new board members aware of that.
You can't, you cannot make a, another motion when, when the vote is going on. You have to wait till after.
Right, that is correct, but, right. If this one fails, you can't vote on this, on this motion again.
Right, but we could tinker the numbers and then repurpose it, could we not, Sue? And then vote on it again? That is a possibility.
You can make it a penny, a penny less, yes.
So for those of us who are not feeling comfortable voting on this motion right now, we could in fact put it off by saying retinker it for a later time, yes?
No, you would have to say yes, no, or abstain.
I mean, but we could say no and then put it back on with a penny less and.
Yes.
You know, I think, I'm hearing people aren't comfortable voting yet and we pushed a motion for that isn't comfortable. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we can buy time.
Uh, we didn't push a motion. I made a motion and it was seconded. So we, we're, that's, that's the process.
Then we had discussion.
No one's pushing anyone. We just had, what, an hour-long conversation? I, I'm just, I made a motion. So can we finalize the motion, Stephanie, please?
Kathleen?
No.
Rob?
No.
Ben?
No.
Jess?
No.
Yo?
No.
I'm going to go back to Jean?
No.
Lori?
No.
And Kathleen?
I had already said no, I'm sorry.
I'm a yes. So, uh, it does not pass.
I'll make a motion that we go with option one.
Does, um, Rob, do me a favor and read or state what option one, one is? Because I don't.
I'll put it up on the screen.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you read it? I have to tend to one of my dogs. I apologize. It's almost ten o'clock.
Option one, Judy, is the A C at two hundred and ten thousand, the engineering at sixteen thousand, and returning seventy-eight thousand to the towns. I'm sorry, seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine.
Okay, Rob has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second by Joe.
Discussion?
Uh, sure, I'll start the discussion. I, I definitely am voting no on this. And I worry that, I know Jean wasn't, but it almost kind of went town, town lines a little. I would hate for that to happen because I think it's beyond important that R A M is a regional and unified board. Um, I, I would be more comfortable if, if four was tinkered with a tiny bit to not, um, encumber all the money, but to leave a little bit more, as Eva said in, in April. But knowing that and having it earmarked for that, I, I feel like, um, a- and I do have to say, and Jean, I apologize you weren't there. I was so heartened and delighted by the class and grace of the Marlboro leadership. I, I will definitely be voting no.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I just have a question. So the unused funds at the end of the year will become surplus for next year then? If we do not use that four hundred and whatever thousand dollars, that becomes surplus?
That's correct.
We don't have any plans to buy, to spend it on anything else at this juncture then?
Um, okay, so we, we could, you know, as, um, you know, we could begin to, we could spend it down. I mean, you can, you can, you know, with board approval, you can transfer some of those funds and, and use it to cover other expenses. But I, I guess the simple answer is anything that's left, um, at the end of the year goes into surplus. Can we spend it on something else? I mean, we, we, we could. Obviously, it's got to be something legitimate and something that we need and, but, um, yeah, so, so some of it can get spent, but whatever doesn't would go into.
Okay, thank you.
Am I wrong, um, in understanding? The surplus goes back to the town, right?
Um, one, right now, one percent, that's the three hundred and four thousand that we're talking about now stays with the board. And then any above and beyond that goes back to the town. Yes, that's correct.
So, to an extent, are we kind of just talking about moving some money from one thing to another thing? And if we're really cognizant about, you know, the, the money in the operating budget and we don't just try to spend it down on any willy-nilly, hey, we've got money to spend, let's buy it before it's gone. Then that money above the one percent is going back to the town. So if scenario one were approved with the seventy-eight, nine, five, nine, um, definitive going back to the towns, added to the surplus, aren't we kind of versus spending the money down so we have less, less money over the one percent? Kind of just moving what will end up being about the same pot of money just from.
Lori, I think, I think you're exactly, I think Lori, you're exactly right. And that's why I was comfortable endorsing the towns. And I want to say something very clearly for every single person on this call. We are all advocates for children. I need to say clearly, I'm offended when people say things, votes are for politics. I'm unaffiliated or votes are anti-kid. I have spent my whole career I am working with kids and disadvantaged kids at that. So we better stop guilting each other and saying that if someone doesn't support a certain vote, that means they're not supporting kids. And we, the towns asked us, yes, we would still spend the same money. It's like a shell game. It's not Peter rubbing Paul. That's, that's inaccurate or incorrect. It's a shell game. It's we're spending the same amount of money, but at this point, we would be doing it out of this year. So we're already, um, would be spending it. So it would definitely happen because this year has already been approved for those other things on, on the left side.
All right, any other discussion?
Stephanie, Joe, I, I, I think, I've heard, I've heard, listen, I think Judy has a good point. But the point I'm trying to make is that you don't have any reserves. This is why I said, I'm not, I, I don't like it. We can change the numbers, but, you know, Eva has a decent number of, an idea of where we're going to be, but there's no guarantee. That's the problem I have with this. You don't have a guarantee that we don't have another obstacle come as. The only other thing, avenue we have is a supplemental appropriation, as Judy asked or talked about. But that's very difficult to go back to the three towns and ask for money. So it's, we, you know, I think we're all saying the same types of things, you know, but it's, it's, it's an option of just what you want to do and where you feel comfortable with, you know?
I think we are. Um, I think our, our final outcomes, everybody wants the best R A M possible. I think though, Joe, you pointed out earlier that we've been on the board for a while. I think it's fair to say though, in March, this is one of the greatest amounts we've ever had in, in March predicting, because we always predict and project for, for surplus. As Scott said, it's a little bit of, of a unique year. We have, so it's kind of like we have this, this opportunity. If we look back historically, we're not normally projecting this much money. So I, I think that's a little bit of the unique year as well.
Well, if I could finish, all I'm trying to say again is, is that you, you just had a big curveball thrown at you. And I, and I, and I'm like, I just want to mention the mistake that's, there was mistakes made in budgeting before. You know, that's, that's a human error factor that, that, that happens. I just want to be comfortable at the end of the year, when we get to June thirtieth, that we have, we have money. And to Mary's point, it rolls over to surplus. It's no different than before, but this is a unique year. And, you know, we should be looking at a, at a, being conservative, more conservative. What happens if something blows up in facilities, a twenty-year-old building? What, you know, if a boiler blows up? Where are we going to get the money from? You know, we can go back and ask the towns and we'll see how receptive they are to that. But that is, in, in the discussion point, I, I'm just articulating that it's, you know, you think it's a lot of money, but it really isn't a lot of money. It can go very, very quickly and we still have three months to go. And the good, I think it is a, a compromise. The towns are still getting four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars plus another, call it eighty thousand dollars. And they're getting money from the state and the feds. They're going to be, they're, they're, their cash registers are flowing, you know, and, and I, I'm just saying that we have to look at what's, what, what we're charged to do as a Board of Education. And that is to make sure that we preserve and fix and fund our children's education and teachers and staff. And again, um, that's, that's the, that's the, the question that I have, that it's, there's no guarantees here. And I'd rather be more conservative than, than going off a projection.
So as, as a discussion point, and this is for everybody, and, and to Joe as well. I, I think that's fair. I'm not normally, um, a gambler either. I run pretty. I, I think that's fair. I'm not normally, um, a gambler either. I run pretty fiscally conservative. I really liked the idea that Eva said, and I think I even said that earlier somewhere tonight, that we could commit X amount of dollars and earmark and plan on committing the other part, but wait until, um, we were closer to the end of the year. Would, would that kind of thing, I, I'm not saying if you'd love it, but would that be more palatable, Joe, or?
Hi, do we have a talking order? Cause my hand has been up.
So is Vinny's. Well, it, it just kind of, we did have.
And it's what, and Stephanie, it's well past 9:30 and we're supposed to make a motion if we're going past 9:30.
I like to just, I mean, maybe, maybe this gets us a little closer, um, and I'm not sure if Rob will accept this amendment, the friendly amendment.
I'd like to just vote on it as it is, if you don't mind. I mean, we, we did a pursue, we voted for hers. I think I'd just like to go through and vote with this one and see how it goes, please.
Is the discussion done though? I, I have my hand up.
Oh, no, I keep discussing. That's totally fine.
Go ahead, Jean.
I see to Vinny first.
Uh, no, all I was gonna bring up was that we do the four tre- four stair treads and the camera 92,000 out of, out of the net favorable position. And that gives us 134,000 additional and 170,000 back to the towns instead of just the 78. That was all, just a compromise.
Okay, I, I, my feeling is this, um, I really wasn't really, you know, diametrically opposed to scenario four. I felt rushed. I felt incredibly rushed. This is very complicated. There's a lot of balls in the air in terms of our options and what's gonna happen between now and April. I, I would feel more comfortable reflecting and thinking about this and, and waiting till April to, to sort of see where this lands, um, if there's a real compelling reason budget-wise or town-wise, we can't do that. I just feel like this was rushed.
We can't do that. We have to decide before April 5th, correct, Scott?
Correct, yes.
So, so one option is to reconvene on the 22nd or 29th, um, of March to try to hash this out some more. Um, Scott, I, um, executive session, can that be put off until April?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll put that off till April, table it. And, um, you know, if, if people need more time, seeing that it's past 10 o'clock now.
Well, there's a motion on the table.
There is a motion, okay, there is a motion on the table. We'll see where this goes. Um, other.
Unless Rob, unless Rob wants to withdraw his motion, that's on him.
No, I, I'm good. I would like to vote, please.
Can you repeat what the motion is at this point? And there was a friendly, friendly amendment? No, Vinny is?
There was no, there was no amendment. There was, that was just discussion of mine.
So the motion is right now to take option one, which is to pay for the AC unit at 210,000, add in the, uh, engineering costs at 16, and basically return, I think, 77, 969 pounds.
All right, are we ready to vote? Any more discussion?
Uh, Stephanie, I even hate to speak right now, but, um, just thinking about what Vinny said. So there is the potential, like you said, to move, move stuff around.
Yeah.
Yes. I don't know that I know enough about anything to move it around, but I, I just.
No, I, I think, I think there is that option and, and it can be explored. But we have to see where this motion goes, cause it's on the table. So are we ready? Judy?
I'm going to say no, but the reason I'm saying no is because I want to hear something like Vinny just said, explored and/or something like someone said about doing something a little different with it for. And not that I'm looking for more meetings, but I, I think we should, we should do that.
Okay, Sue?
No.
Mary?
I'm also going to vote no, hoping that we can compromise a little bit.
Jean?
Same thing. I, I'm, we're not ready to vote on this, I feel. And we need some more compromise and more discussion on it to come up with, with what we could all have consensus on.
Lori?
Um. I'm gonna vote yes.
Kathleen?
I'm going to abstain, and it's not because I don't think any of the motions are good, but I feel like the board still hasn't come to terms with what it wants to do. And I just wanna say that I think that's important for our communities to know. This isn't about delaying the process and this isn't about whether or not we think it's important to give back to the towns or to represent the students, um, that we have the privilege to, you know, stand up for or, or to be part of this board for. It really is to ensure that our decision has been thoughtful and really does respond to the needs of our students in our community. So I, I don't, I, I'm sorry that we're going so long, but I think that it should be noted that this board is very thoughtful and empathetic to the needs of, of our kids.
Very well said, Kathleen.
Rob?
Yes.
Vin?
Um, no.
Jess?
I'm gonna say no for the same, uh, reasons that Kathleen gave.
Joe?
I'm a yes.
And I'm a no as well. So yeses are three, noser, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and one abstention. Motion does not pass. All right, I, I think we should start looking at, um, next Monday or the Monday after to reconvene. Um, at least we'll only.
Doesn't have to be a motion. Doesn't have to be.
Well, we can discuss it and then.
Oh, I don't know Robert's rules, but I'm like, don't we have to make a motion to like do something else?
All right, so, um, so, um, yeah, at least the next meeting would be, would be solely focused on budget. Um, if we, if we put this off, um.
On budget or on this particular element of the budget? Yeah, thank you, clarifying.
Are we gonna throw executive session into that too, Stephanie? Well, um, that would, Scott, what do you think?
I, I'm, I, I appreciate all of your, your deliberations and your passion on this. I would, I would sincerely hope that our next meeting would be significantly shorter than this and that it'll be a little more, um, you know, formulated. So I, I would, I would think that we should be able to, um, resolve this pretty quickly if we have a week to sit on it. And we'll certainly be happy to get any additional information. So I would say yes. Adding the executive session to this, to, to the next meeting would be.
What I think would be helpful, uh, the, the sort of PowerPoint slides are great, but a one-page summary. Here's what happens if you do one. Here are your options, you know, going forward for two, three, and four. So, cause it, cause it, you know, it's hard to follow. I'm not a ver- I, I read things. I'm not a verbal listening good person. So it would be good to have a one-page kind of scenario about the surplus versus the, the, what goes forward versus what gets given back to the towns beyond what we've gotten in the PowerPoint slides. That would help me decide immensely.
Okay.
These, these are sparse and, and I need more about if we choose four, what happens and why are people talking about how much will be left at the end of the year? And what happens to that surplus, especially to people new to the board? I think they need to understand that.
Okay, can we talk about dates? Um, is there, uh, rather than say who is available, is there anybody not available next Tuesday on the 22nd?
You said Tuesday, right?
Tu- Tuesday, I meant Monday, Monday, the 20th, oh gosh, sorry.
I know I am not. I, just cause Eastcon, that's the only night that we're open and I've taken the last couple ones off of it. And I don't think they'll let me do that again.
Anyone else not able to make it next Monday at, on the 22nd?
I'm away. I'm not sure what my schedule was gonna be on that night, so.
Yeah, I might, I have a conflict too.
Okay, so that's three. How about the 29th?
I'm free, oh.
Any, anybody not free on the 29th?
I'm not.
I, I probably won't be on a, a Monday until April.
Do we wanna look at, at another day of the week?
Sure.
Tuesday, the 23rd? Any, I, I'm getting my second shot that afternoon in Bridgeport, so I'm hoping I can get back in time. Um.
It took my husband 15 minutes to get his today.
So, um, the 23rd, do people think they have that free?
Works for me.
I do.
Okay, why don't we schedule it on the 23rd? Um, maybe Kathleen, you can, if I'm not, if I, I might be late. So somebody else can start the meeting at least for me?
With pleasure, but you'll be back, I'm sure.
So, I'll try.
So, Scott, can you do, um, some of, some of the pre-work for that meeting? And it sounds like, and I agree, it's a board that cares that we're, and I think the deliberation or not being super clear with an opinion means people are open-minded. But I'm hoping that you can maybe carve out a couple of, um, more compromised, um, scenarios like, like what Vinny said.
They keep putting their hands.
So I guess, so my, my question to you is, we have four scenarios now. Do you want? And I, I heard Jean say maybe, maybe a more descriptive sheet that kind of reviews each of those.
And reviews it in terms of the background context of if we spend this down, here's what gets forwarded to surplus next year that the board can spend. Or, you know, I want the three pots of money that appear to be there, like there's surplus, there's return of the town. Um, I, 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 I just have trouble following the pots of money in terms of, um, the context of the spending. And I would like to see that.
Sure. But now are, are you asking then Judy, my question for you is, are you looking for additional options?
I, what I was thinking was, um, it sounded to me like Vinny's, what I heard Vinny say, unless I misunderstood, was like the stair treads and some of the pieces that he, that it was part of, it was kinda taking one and tweaking it a little. And another idea I kind of heard was taking four and tweaking it a little, like with what Eva, wh- what I think I understood her to say was, you know, um, having one piece and then maybe the timeline, um, at the end of May, the other amount would transfer or something, just so it's super clear to all of us.
You know what, Scott? I, what might be useful is having kind of like a working document. You know that spreadsheet you made or Eva made where we move things back and forth? I think you can almost do that and watch the impact and how it changes right then, you know?
Okay.
I, I don't see how that changes anything other than your, your, my, my concern again is you, you don't, you're, you don't have any cons- you don't have any reserves. I mean, I, I can go back and make a friendly amendment or whatever we wanna do here. I don't see, I think we just gotta get this done tonight because it's, I, I can't make the 22nd. This is a waste of time. I mean, it's, you know, there's, there's compromise here to be made. Let's make a deal. Let's get this over with. Um, unless Jean is really uncomfortable and Kathleen is uncomfortable and whoever else is uncomfortable and you don't understand it. But you get, you gotta start asking some questions to the chair or to Mr..
Yeah, I'm, I'm, Joe, I'm totally uncomfortable. I really am.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
There's a lot of money at stake and I am from Marlboro and, and they, the, the sort of like, I'm hearing from my representatives of Marlboro. Marlboro's uncomfortable with this. So I really wanna understand all of it in order to make a decision. Because, um, gosh, I might get unelected, which might be a good thing. This is a lot of time commitment.
And Lori, Lori actually left too, so I think it wouldn't be fair for us to, you know what I mean, go down something with her.
Lori, Lori had to leave. Um, so I think, I think we should schedule the 23rd Tuesday at 6:30 to do budget, followed by, um, executive session and, um, and continue the discussion.
Scott, can you send out the link for that, please?
The meeting link?
Yes.
I did that Judy already. I just sent.
Oh my goodness, Scott, thank you.
Okay, all right.
I was, I was afraid you were gonna change your mind, you guys.
Oh, gosh.
Is there anything left in the meeting or should we motion to adjourn?
Yeah, it's been fun. You guys are my only social life right now, so this is great.
So we, the only thing left was the reports from the, um, the subcommittees, um.
Table, table to next meeting.
Table.
Let's table them. And now we need to go to public comment.
Yes, I would have public comment if you allow me.
Go ahead, Dieter.
Uh, number one, I'd like to say thank you to the board, to the administration, which, uh, which budgets have put forward and support what's working on it. And so far, I see it only very, very realistic budget which is brought forward. I'm not unhappy with that. Which I'm, uh, and then I'd like to make few comments on, just to clarify something. So list which Scott sent out with, uh, past budget surplus is one, I did not see it. But generally, so gen- so Connecticut general studies says that school districts cannot, I say cannot, carry over funds, generally. As well as as a point is stated, that the school district is allowed to spend all the money which are approved by the voters. This is second point. Since the next point is in 2005 or between 2005 and 2008, the law was amended by this, by the, um, and says that the region schools only can carry over one or two percent, depends which district. And now it's up to you, but this one percent is connected with, uh, uh, what is that, um, capital items only. You cannot operation, uh, adding operations, et cetera. You cannot do this. Only capital, that is what you can forward, this one percent. This is just one. Then for, uh, further was made, made some comments and, um, Marlboro is very good shape because they got the 1.89% um, grant list increase, which is right, which is great and which is positive. I like that. However, keep in mind, this 1.89% is not coming in because of new businesses, which, uh, new taxpayers, this comes mostly from your revaluation of your properties. Keep this in mind. And therefore, this is a little bit, uh, different. So next point which I had made before is, um, Marlboro is with six, the RAM budget comes in right now, right, this is right now, without any changes made so far, with 6.2%. Which is, I admit, 5.7% comes in because of the change in the student population, which will not change within the next couple of years. If Joe remembers in the past years, he been was screaming and yelling because there behind the same boat what Marlboro is today. Also, this whole thing is just a shifting, is a wave going through the times. And then with the capital equipment was also made a, a comment that in the past, uh, board never put capital in there. Yes, that is correct. Since schools was five, it's years old, you don't need then the capital which you need today. Today, your school is 21 years old. And therefore, your capital request is totally different as when the school was just eight years old. Also, this is a little bit confusing what, uh, some of the board members mentioned. As you have to keep the realistic here in place. So next point was made with, uh, the so-called, uh, American Rescue Program. Yes, this is good news. However, the, the government put a big wrench in our budget proposal. A good news change because, uh, so far is proposed that Hebron gets about 1.7 million, Marlboro 1.1 million. But every time when you get grant money from the state or from the Fed, there are a book, a whole book on regulations, how you can spend it and where you can spend it. And this news is not published yet. Therefore, we have no clue what we will get for what we're allowed to use it, et cetera. Also, this news is news, however, we don't know what to do with it. This is a bad part of it. As again, um, Stephanie, thank you for letting me talk.
Okay, thank you.
And then again, as so far as what I'm seeing, the budget which you bring forward is a solid budget. And I think, um, that should be fly with, with the public. And just only with your surplus money, okay, would be nice to see it coming way back to us. But it is, you have to make a decision if it is 100% necessary for you, what you have in. And sure, you made very good points. You need some, somewhere a little cushion because you really don't know what is coming so far in the year.
Okay, Dieter, you're reaching your three minutes here.
Okay, thank you. But I thought you maybe have a little bit patience with me because I have to talk a little slower so that you can understand me. Thank you, Stephanie.
We got you, Dieter.
Okay.
All right. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second it, Jean?
All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Opposed? All right, passes. Good night, everybody. We'll, um, see you on the 23rd at 6:30. And please at, reach out if you have any questions.
Thank you, Aunt. Thank you, Dieter, for hanging in there to share that. That was, that was important.